Okay, good evening. Welcome to the public portion of the Meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectment of August 30, 2022. We have returned to public session from executive session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is announcements. And I understanding is our town clerk is going to give us one last warning about the public polling places for our state election on September 6th.
Good evening, Mary Mazlofsky, Town Clerk. Thank you for the opportunity to touch base with you all and the voting public again. We are currently in the middle of in-person early voting, which is held in this room. It will continue Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday this week from 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. if anyone is interested in voting early. I do want to clarify, any votes, any ballots that are out there need to be returned and received by our office by the close of the polls on Tuesday. So we need to receive those ballots by 8:00 p.m. They can be dropped into our office, or they can be dropped in the ballot box outside, at the side door next to the parking lot. A friendly reminder that there are now only three polling places. The precinct one will still vote at the Congregational Church on 6A. Precinct seven will still vote at King's Way on 6A. And then all of the other precincts, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 8A, I'm sorry. Yes, 8 and 8A will all be voting at the senior center. They will be all located in the ballroom. We will have greeters at the door to help you find your precincts and to help you find the correct line. We should have plenty of staff there to do that. We have police officers assigned, so we will be ready to go Tuesday.
Now, Mary, with respect to people who have gotten the mail-in ballots, they must be received also by the 6th?
They have to be received the 6th by 8:00 p.m.
If they haven't nailed them in, they should get them in right away.
They should get them in right away. We will, we have to have them checked in and processed. We will either process them early if they're in ahead of time, or we will process them at the polls on Election Day. So we will do that by 8:00 p.m. We will be checking this drop box and checking the mail, calling post offices to make sure that anything that they have in hand, we have in hand for 8 o'clock that evening.
So they should try to get them here to Town Hall, probably to that box prior to Tuesday, that would be?
Absolutely.
The best scenario.
If they can drop them off by hand, if they've put them in the mail, we check with the post offices as well as late as Tuesday, right at the close of business. We will call them and make sure that we have all of the mail that they have. And then we will be checking that drop box for 8 o'clock. Someone will be here outside with a key to make sure that anything that was there before 8:00 p.m. is delivered to the polls.
Okay, so on September 6th, nobody should go here to Town Hall to vote, correct?
Correct.
Nobody should go to the Board of Realtors office on Mid-Tech Drive?
Correct.
So 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 8A are all voting at the Yarmouth Senior Center?
Correct, all in the ballroom.
Precinct one will vote at the same location, at the Congregational Church as usual?
Correct.
And precinct seven will vote as usual at King's Way?
Correct.
And we've told people this 100,000 times?
We have told people this.
Didn't have anybody complaining?
We will get the signboards out for the weekend. I will request that those be, be put up as a reminder over the weekend. We didn't want to do it this week and confuse people with polling locations and having them thinking that they were supposed to go to their regular polling locations instead of here. So we have sent out a robocall, and we've done a couple of email blasts for folks to remind them about early voting and about voting in general. We will do another one towards the end of the week. And as a friendly reminder for Tuesday, we will be here this weekend, so getting ready.
Just as a precaution, will there be signs here and at the real estate office to tell people to go to?
We will make sure that there are signs in both places. So the signs that were up at the Realtors Building will be up again.
What more you can do than that?
We're doing our best, we hope. The town social media page has been posting updates. We're doing news flashes on the town webpage. There is an election sub-page on the town clerk's portion of the website that has the specimen ballots. And if anybody has questions, they can call us. We're happy to help them find their precinct, help them find their polling location, answer questions about their voting in general.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for Mary?
No.
Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you. I hope we see you all either before Tuesday or Tuesday.
Any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman? I would like to use this moment just to remind people that might be watching that they should be conserving water and make it very, very clear that irrigation systems should not be on. People should be very, very careful about using water. We're in a very severe drought, and we also have some concerns and some challenges with respect to managing our water supplies. So once again, I want to use this moment just to, again, make up the Yarmouth residents to be incredibly careful about the use of water.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that's it for announcements. We're going to now go to public comment. I see somebody from the historic village of Bass River approaching.
Good evening, and thank you, Tom McEnroe, from the very historic village of Bass River in this very old town of Yarmouth. And a little, we'll just be careful with that tonight. So thank you all for doing what you do and your compassion and commitment to our town. And I'd come before you this evening to say a big thank you to our staff members. A few years ago, Jeff Colby, our DPW Director, and CDM Smith put together a program over in Bayberry Hills to use our reclaimed, reused, or gray water. Which one you want to use is up to you. It has three different terms. But if you do the calculations, since that time, they saved us over 100 million gallons of water. Didn't come out of the aquifer. It was being used by the Workshop Row Treatment Plant. That plant generates about 28 million gallons of effluent, and we churn out a little bit more in reclaimed, reused, or gray water, whichever one you want to call it, which is fabulous. 100 million gallons, we did not take from the aquifer since that process has been going. And that is remarkable. A lot of other communities wish they could generate that type of gallon of clean water, which is being used on our golf course. If we didn't use that, it'd just go right into the ground, back into the aquifer, and take many, many, many years to get there. It takes about 20 years for a mile, for water to travel a mile distance under the ground. That's an extremely long time. The foresight and the courage of these men that put it through were exactly what this town is about. We have some historic venues in our, well, historic moments in our town. A lot of stuff with the salt works and everything else that was started. Captain Howes up in the north side invented a little piece for the sailboats. We have historic moments in our town, and this was one of them. Can any other community say that they didn't draw 100 million gallons of water? Of course they can't, because they're not doing it. This is a practice that we need to keep thinking about and moving it towards the future and not just taking the water and just charging it into a place that's just going to take forever to get back to the aquifer. We have to use this, what I call, a source that is, you know, very, everybody wants water. Look at Mississippi today. They just made a national, I mean, a state emergency because their water is, they don't have enough water to use for the fire, to flush toilets. It's a state emergency, if you were listening to the news today. We just had a fire in our dump. How many millions of gallons of drinking water did we use to put that fire out when we have reclaimed water right next door? And we're not even using it. We use about 20 million gallons for our public golf course, and the other 10 million gallons is just charging to the ground. That's 27,000 gallons of water a day that's just being gone. It makes the way back to the aquifer, but that's, you know, we could use the practice that these gentlemen started and build upon it. We're going to be doing a collection system, which is 50 years too late. Mostly, all the ground in Yarmouth is contaminated, right? If we just take that collection from the house, what happens to that contaminated soil that's been there for 50 years? We really don't believe that Mother Nature is going to filter it out, right? We have to use that gray water to help purge that contaminated soil underneath the leach and fields and push all that nitrogen out to the Big Blue Sea. There's no way that DEP, and as a matter of fact, the Wastewater Resources Advisory Committee had DEP for a meeting a couple weeks ago, there was no public comment. No one could ask what their take was on reused reclaimed water, which is a highly, extremely source that we need to take a grip upon. And there's one more comment I want to talk about. I listened to Mr. Price about the airport. He did a very extensive report in how vital that airport is. It's extremely important. It's geographically located in a great spot, right in the middle of our county, right? And the piece I missed out on was, is that airport big enough for a natural disaster to happen? What I mean by that, our area is extremely volatile, right? We live like one wave away from being washed away. Is that airport capable of bringing in planes of big size to help our community? Or is it big enough to take people out? Because, you know, that evacuation route on Route 6, do we really think everyone's going to make it? That airport is extremely important. With that, I bid you all good night.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Anyone else on public comment? Okay. We have next a recognition of retiree Connie Marr of the library. Jane, you're going to make that presentation?
My tiptoes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Connie won't be with us this evening. She had a preference to just say farewell and leave us. So I thank you for this recognition of Connie Marr's service to the community of Yarmouth. She started as a part-time library assistant in the children's room, and after a few years, we were able to offer her a full-time position. She rose to the position of youth services supervisor in 2017, and she enjoyed that challenge. She and her assistant provided services in, well, we provide services in two locations, storytimes, other special events, and she curates a wonderful collection of books and other materials for children of all ages. She's a quiet force, and she advocated for children and their families throughout the town, throughout the community. Connie used creativity and imagination to capture children's minds with great literature, social and cultural activities, and a willingness to share information on any topic that came up. Connie recognized the need for diversity, equity, and inclusion long before it became a buzzword in library school and in our national media. When Connie retired earlier this month, we all went out for an after-hours dinner, which our associations helped us to pay for, and we thoroughly enjoyed our time together. We all will have fond memories of Connie for years to come. So I thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, Jane. We have an official citation, which I'm going to read for the record, and then I'll give it to you, and you can get it to Connie. It says, "Tow Yarmouth Board of Selectment, official citation, be it known that the town of Yarmouth hereby recognizes Connie Marr on her retirement as library youth service supervisor effective August 15th of 2022, and for dedicated service to the town of Yarmouth. And be it further known that the town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for her total 10 years of tireless service in the libraries division." This citation is duly signed by the chairman, Board of Selectmen, on this 30th day of August in the year of our Lord 2022. And I have signed it on behalf of all five of the members of the Board of Selectmen. With it is a medallion. On the front of it is the town seal, and on the back of it is a windmill that's also attached. The medallion may very much, may very well go up in value if they change the town seal. So I kind of keep track of it. So I'll give this to you, and with our thanks and appreciation, and you can get this to Connie.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your nice words about Connie's service here as a child librarian, actually. Public hearing on special one-day alcohol license, wine and malt cultural center of Cape Cod, 307 Main Street in South Yarmouth. You want to come forward on this and identify yourself? And then what I will do is I will read the public notice into the record, then you can proceed. I don't think this is going to be lengthy or difficult. So why don't you tell us who you are?
Absolutely. My name's Molly Demuliner, and I'm the Executive Director at the Cultural Center of Cape Cod.
Okay. The notice is as follows. Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as a local licensing authority, has received an application from the Cultural Center of Cape Cod. Now, you got to help me. Molly?
Demuliner.
Say it again?
Demuliner.
Okay. For a special one-day alcohol, wine, and malt license for a viewing exhibit at 307 Main Street, South Yarmouth. I hope it's, it's an art viewing exhibit. The event will take place on September 1st, 2022. The special alcohol license hours will be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Hearing will be held Tuesday, August 30, 2022, at Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 on Friday, August 26th, in the Administrator's Office at Town Hall, or it can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouthMA.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. So why don't you just tell us very briefly about this event that's coming up?
Absolutely. So we have a summer exhibition that's been up since July called Cape Cod Outside In Upside Down. So if you haven't been to the Cultural Center lately, we have turfed the entire gallery, and I've curated the entire collection from the ceiling. And so there are about 30 Adirondack chairs all the way around the gallery that are created and painted by local artists. And so we just want to have a fun after-hours event for people who are working during the day. And so it's $5 for members, it's $10 for the general public, kids are free. Everybody will be wrist-banded, everybody will be ID'd at the door if they, just so we know who's 21. And we just want to do something fun for the community.
Thank you. We did have one, I saw an email of support. Do you have? We'll put this into the record. Thank you, Dan. From Laura Kelly at 307 Old Main. For the record, we received a notice regarding the request for a special alcohol license for the Cultural Center of Cape Cod and have no objection to it being issued. Excuse me, that address is 49, the RE, the subject was 307 Old Main, which is the Cultural Center. Her address is 49 Pleasant Street, South Yarmouth. Did we get any other public input on this? No? Okay. Does anybody in the audience have any? Tom, let me comment. I have a feeling Tom's going to support this. We'll see if I'm right.
Thank you, Mr. Jamon Tom McEnroe, from the very historic village of Bass River. As you know, the Cultural Center is very historic to our community. It's a very important asset to our community, and the arts is extremely important to our community. This function is superb. The Executive Director does an outstanding job, and definitely, for anybody that wants to see it, please don't hesitate RSVP, because it's going to fill up fast. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the hours are very limited, too. It's only a 6 to 9 event, so I can't imagine there's going to be a lot of concern about noise or things like that. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
I support this, and it's nice meeting you.
Thank you to you as well.
Good luck.
Dan, anything?
No comments. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I hope you have a great event.
Thank you so much. Please come visit.
I echo Mark's comments. I think it's a great asset to the community, and I wish you the best with the event and everything else that the Cultural Center does. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the application as presented to the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Tax rate classification hearing is our... Assessor ready on that?
Good evening, folks. Hard to believe it's been a year already. So my name is Tara Monroe. I am the Assistant Assessor for the town of Yarmouth. We're having, I'm sorry, we're here this evening because we're currently in the process of setting the tax rate, which we do annually this time of the year, in order to issue the first half tax bill. After the budgeting process takes place and town meeting take place, the next step in the process is for the assessors to determine through real estate market activities what the value of all property in the town should be. Once those values are computed, they are reviewed by the Department of Revenue for approval and certification. Our values have been submitted, and approval was granted on Thursday, August 18th, which brings us back to basically why we're here this evening. Towns that are certified by the Department of Revenue as assessing at full and fair cash value must decide whether or not to tax all classes of properties at the same rate, which is commonly referred to as adopting a factor of one, or to shift the burden to the major property classes. And you, as our local officials, have the option of shifting the burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes anywhere from 1% to 50%. This would effectively create two different tax rates, one for the residential class and one for the commercial class. And there is a graphic in your packet that illustrates the shift. The Board of Assessors voted at their July 7th, 2022, meeting to recommend to the Board of Selectmen a factor of one and to reject the residential and small commercial exemption. In conclusion, I will tell you that to date, the town of Yarmouth's policy has been to adopt a factor of one and to reject the residential and small commercial exemption. And that's all I have, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is whether to kind of leave things the way they've been over a long period of, this is my 10th hearing, I think, on this, and the factor of one's always, and the other nine years has been adopted. We have a very small and declining commercial tax basis it is. You would have to put quite a burden on them to change from the factor of one, a burden that couldn't be spread very far. Those are my initial observations of what I've seen in the past. So I'll go to the board, see if they have questions or comments. Mark?
I have no comments. No questions, thank you.
No comment or question, thank you.
Peter?
No comment or questions.
That was easy. I am not...
That's going to be a record.
All right, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town of Yarmouth continue to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one and to reject the residential exemption and the small commercial exemption.
Okay, great. Who will second that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that carries unanimously. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the use of a signature stamp for the tax rate forms and authorize the Director of Finance to sign for the Board of Selectmen electronically.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously as well. We do have to get signatures to authorize our Finance Director to sign on our behalf, and I think that, I saw that in here. Here it is.
I have a copy here for you as well.
I have it.
Okay.
So let's sign that and give it to Ed right now, so we don't...
That's a great idea, and I'm also going to bring around one more form, which is the LA5. We also have to sign and submit, and our intent is to go upstairs and do that right now.
Okay.
So it's the first thing the DOR sees tomorrow morning when they come in.
We'll have this one done in very short order. Yeah, no bonds tonight.
Bonds are unbelievable. Does it need to be blue? We usually slip in at least one free lunch certificate.
Yeah, that's one of the only signatories that's not delegable. You can't delegate that legally. Or it has to sign the bonds.
It's all signed.
Well, I guess there's no personal guarantees.
Well, may I use your pen? Done one die. Thank you. Do you need the duplicate signed as well?
You might as well. Sure.
Playing, you could get hurt.
The shortest, the shortest tax classification hearing we've had.
It's your leadership, Mike.
No, it's an enlightened board. What's this one? Oh, this is the allocation letter? What's this one? Oh, this is the allocation letter. Right. Which one is that?
That's coming up.
All right. Next item, Discussion of the Community Economic Development Committee, otherwise known as the CEDC, charge.
I thought I could give you just a little background on the process and how we got to where we are right now and what needs to be accomplished. You have the revised Community and Economic Development Committee charge in front of you, and this is part of an overall update and reform of the tourism fund process that we started last year. And part of that reform is to create some additional transparency in the tourism fund process, you know, to reinstitute the importance of that overall tourism fund and to make some technical corrections on the process. And among those reforms that we had accomplished is, first of all, to change the manner in which the appropriations occur to the fund, and we did this in conjunction with having town meeting review in detail the existing legislation that created that fund. And so now we've adopted a process of listing out the categories of funding, what the amounts of funding are. We do that every year. And we also made some reform in the overall funding to clarify when the fund was originally created. There was no such thing as the short-term rental, which the town has voted to reserve for wastewater improvements, and so we needed to reestablish legislatively, and that was done at town meeting, that home rule petition, so hasn't been approved yet, but we'll be making the technical corrections to the act to remove the short-term rentals so that it fulfills the original intent of the article to use a share of the hotel tax to fund tourism for the town each year and not include the funds from the short-term rentals. And the third major part of the process, and I had worked closely with Mark Forrest, then Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, last year to draft some changes that made some important updates to the CEDC charge, and really, there were two major areas that we wanted to impact this. First and foremost, we wanted to address some of the issues that are related to the approval of the CEDC funding recommendations, and especially the delegation of that authority to the town administrator and under what process would be used to involve the Board of Selectmen. The statute says that all of the projects must be approved by the Board of Selectmen, and we've worked out language that produces an annual funding allocation plan that's presented to the Board of Selectmen, and then the expenditure of the tourism preservation funds are consistent with that plan approved by the town administrator after consultation with the Board of Selectmen. So all of the questions about how, if, and when the delegation would be occurred and how the projects are approved, that's improved. And the second major change in the charge is to address potential conflict of interest concerns by not naming the Chamber of Commerce as a named member of the committee. And the reason for that is we included the language to have representative of the business community, but where the Chamber of Commerce receives annual financial support through an RFP process that you recently saw, the new RFP, to provide marketing services. It was felt that, you know, they shouldn't be named as a member of the committee because it places them in an awkward position of a potential conflict of interest. So that was the second major change. And thirdly, we forwarded the revised draft over to the CEDC, just, you know, for the full transparency, to ask them to review it, see the changes, and to submit any additional ideas for honing down that charge. And I think they did a great job. That would represent the redlined comments that you have, the red items are the recommendations from the CEDC. And I also want to acknowledge the efforts of our Economic Development Coordinator, Kyle Pettisini, who had worked very hard to coordinate with the CEDC the changes, and he very well may be online to answer any questions, but I think I can try to answer them as well. But that kind of brings you up to where we are now, and we actually, you know, we held up the process for a few months to get some substantive input from the CEDC, and I think that their comments were very helpful, and that's how we arrived at the charge that's in front of you now.
I have some minor technical issues and questions that I want to get into, but first I want to hit the broader, more general, what I think are the broader, more general issues. And one of them, to start with, is this language under membership, under that paragraph near the bottom of the page where it says, "Seven members, five at large, membership shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, including at least one representative of the Yarmouth Business Community." And I want to look at that language, "one representative of the Yarmouth Business Community." So the question I had, and I ran this by our town administrator today, and the only reason I did it today is I didn't have a chance really to read this in any detail until today. My question, there's an ambiguity there. I mean, does that mean that one representative, that person has to be a representative of the business community, or can it be any person from the business community? Now, let me just give you a hypothetical example to illustrate what I mean. Suppose you had somebody that, like Jerry Manning, that's been here forever, he has a restaurant. Would he be a representative of the business community, or does he have to represent a particular business group? Contrast him with somebody that, Tom Murphy, who represents the Yarmouth Restaurant Association. He represents a organization within the business community. The question is, what is intended there? I think there's some confusion. Does it simply, if it's in the first example I gave, the Jerry Manning example, it should just say a representative from the Yarmouth Business Community. But this doesn't say that. It says "one representative of the Yarmouth Business Community," which I read to mean someone representing the Yarmouth Business Community. So the question is, what's the intent here?
And I would answer, Mark could chime in as well. When we worked this up, that the intent of the language was to preserve a member of the Yarmouth Business Community being on the committee, that it was not intended to be a specific, like, elected representative of a specific organization, but a member of the business community. That way, we could have that.
Then if that's the case, I would suggest the language say at least one representative from the Yarmouth Business Community. That would resolve the ambiguity. Okay? I just didn't know what was intended. Okay, so we got that. The other issue Mark and I have talked about, actually with our previous chairman, and that goes to the issue of who has the authority to make the allocation of these funds. And Mark brought to my attention previously, and I asked him again because I misplaced the statute, Chapter 338 of the Acts of 2006. Now, I have not had a lot of involvement in the past with the CEDC, and I'm certainly not offering any criticism of that board. But the statute says, and I quote from it, "Any and all contracts for services, programs, and projects authorized under this Act shall be awarded and executed by the Board of Selectmen or its designee upon the recommendation of the Community and Economic Development Committee, subject to compliance with all applicable procurement laws." So that's, in my opinion, the way I read this, is saying the final determination as to the contract for the service, programs, and projects is made by this board. This board, however, can designate somebody else to do that if they wish. Do I read that correctly, Mark?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. And I think one of the reasons why I had originally sort of raised this issue is that when I came on the board initially several years ago, the board was somewhat disengaged in the actual process of awarding contracts and making decisions. And it became a concern to me that this was somehow, it was assumed that it was an authority that was delegated to the prior administrator, but the documentation on that delegation really was less than adequate. I think that's, we've sort of covered that part of the saga, and I think it's pretty much widely recognized, including by council. To me, the real question is, is to what degree does the board want, I mean, it's very, very clear that the board does have the authority. It's there. This was the language in the proposed statute that was presented to town meeting. This is what the voters were told, we were going to pursue. And then I just think the delegation of authority should be just upfront and by the board and be very, very clear, rather than it sort of being assumed by stitching together two or three other policies from years ago. So I think that's really part of the discussion now. The prior board, there was some difference of opinion as to how engaged the board should be in the process. So I think the language in the charge is reflective of, obviously, providing, it gets, let me just back up. This language gets the board involved in the process because we see that there's now an allocation plan of funds that ultimately goes to town meeting. That was a recommendation that was endorsed by town council. We're obviously involved in submitting the articles. So, and prior to the last town meeting, in our discussions with the EDC, it was a very fruitful and very engaging conversation. So it became pretty clear to both us and the committee as to how those allocations were set up and why they were recommended the way they were. So our role there is to submit the article and obviously, and make a recommendation, which we endorsed. But in the past, we hadn't even done that as a board. And then the other change is to, and again, the board clearly, the board can really do whatever it wants, but I think in the past, we've really respected the work of the members of the EDC, and in the past, there's generally been support for their work. So the way this is structured is, is we've delegated this, the decisions on contracting under this proposed change in the charge, is that it's clearly now delineated in the charge that the Board of Selectmen will be consulted after those recommendations came in or come in, but that the contracting authority would be the town administrator. And you could have, I mean, you could make an argument that, you know, the town administrator, rather than the administrator make the final decisions, that the authority rests with the board. The question is, is how much of it does it want to delegate? What's proposed here is that we get consulted before those decisions are made, and we leave that to the town administrator. And I'm very comfortable with that. I just think that we need to be involved in this in the beginning, and then we need to be briefed at the end before contracts are awarded. And I think this provides that balance. And it's, like I said, it's more reflective of a prior board. This board may decide that it wants to have everything come before it and make the decision itself.
Maybe, and I'm just thinking off the top of my head in response to what you said, maybe there should be a sentence that says that nothing in this charge abrogates the board's authority pursuant to that statute, and then it would be up to the board to decide from time to time how it wants to handle that. I'm just making a suggestion, because I know this procedure hasn't been followed in the past, but I, or at least I'm under that understanding, but it's like the old thing, when you discover error, do you, so is that the reason, justification to perpetuate it? The statute, I think, is pretty clear that the board should have been involved somehow, or at least they should have made a designation of some other individual or entity that they wanted to delegate that authority to. But that would give the board flexibility on a case-by-case basis if they decided they needed it or wanted it. And the other thing is, I'm not so sure a charge can override an act of legislature. In fact, I'm pretty sure it can't.
No, but...
So I think that should be clear.
Yeah, no, if I can respond to that. I think that what was important was to find a way to clearly articulate, I mean, this is not a bad place to reassert the board's authority, but it's also not a bad place as well to designate how it might want to delegate some of its authority. So that's the reason why the language is there. In the past, some of these others have turned into policies that end up in documents that rarely get seen by anyone. So when I asked, for example, years ago, where exactly is the authority, where did we delegate it? I mean, it was, it was like, it was like an Easter egg hunt, you know, finding out those old policies. So I just think this is, it may not be the best place to put it, but at least it's there. It's transparent. It's right there. It's very clear for everyone to see. The charges seem to be documents that we check in and review from time to time, and I'm very comfortable with making notation that doesn't change anything in the statute or diminishes, you know, our authority.
And here's a little bit of it, because I'm not like really worried about it, but a little bit of a concern is, it says the CEDC shall, consistent with Chapter 338 of the Acts of 206, is amended. So it references the statute, and then it says, "Make recommendations and determinations with respect to the Tourism Preservation Fund and allocation of funds for marketing, physical improvements, and other initiatives that promote Yarmouth as a destination for visitors." So that language kind of, the only reference to that statute refers back to the CEDC and their conduct and activities. It doesn't say anything about what the board's position is. That's why I think maybe if we had a sentence in there to that effect, notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, you know, "This shall not amend, you know, shall not in any way amend," chapter, we can't do it anyway. We can't amend this statute. We could only delegate authority from the statute. So I know that was a source of contention before, and that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up now. I don't want to see it become a problem going forward. As you said, the general rule would be, I mean, I would anticipate that the board would more likely than not, in most, in almost all cases, in most cases, be deferring to the recommendations of the CEDC, as it does to most recommendations of other boards.
So, just so that I understand, Mr. Chairman, you're proposing a couple of modifications. You're comfortable with the charges drafted, however, you're suggesting that the word "of" be replaced, and the last paragraph be replaced with the word "from," and that there be an additional disclosure, just making it clear that nothing in the charge diminishes the role of the Board of Selectmen in terms of its authority under the statute.
Correct. I have some other, you know, minor things, but yes.
If I made a motion to adopt the charge, the revised charge with those two modifications, would that be?
Yeah, that would be good, but I want to just go through and do a few other minor things.
Go for it.
So in the first sentence, it says, "CEDC shall work with existing businesses to create quality year-round and seasonal jobs through expansion and encourage retention." Expansion of what?
Right.
I mean, it's more of a grammatical issue, but what are we talking about expanding, and what are we encouraging retention of? That's not clear. Is it expansion of businesses? Is that what's intended?
It was, it was intended to expand current businesses, adding new businesses, and hopefully that they would be year-round businesses and seasonal jobs, encourage retention of existing businesses and employees. I agree.
Why don't we say that?
This isn't a grammatical, I mean, it's an incomplete sentence.
Why don't we say that?
Yeah.
Because that'd be clear, okay. The other thing is, go down a couple paragraphs where it talks about CEDC will work, blah, blah, blah. The town administrator will assist CEDC keeping abreast of federal, state, and regional economic, he's not going to do that by himself, he's not going to have time. I would suggest that after the word "town administrator," we add the words "and/or his designees" to show that this is probably more of a collective administrative, I mean, assistant town administrator may end up doing some of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
We hope.
It's not just going to be, it's just not going to be on the town administrator. So, "and/or his designees." The next one I have is more of another question on the next paragraph where it says, "Make recommendations and determinations with respect to the Tourist Revenue Preservation Fund and its allocation." The word "and determinations" has me a little bit confused, and maybe that's just me, but-
I would recommend you strike that.
Yeah.
It just confuses me, I don't really know why it's there.
No, it's not going to-
So we're going to omit that. Okay, that's, that's a good edit. I didn't have the solution, I had the more of the identification of the problem. Okay. The other question I have, and this is just-
Mr. Chairman, on the determinations, the funds are to be allocated with a certain percentage towards physical improvements, certain percentage towards marketing, and that's, that's what the determination means, that we're meeting those requirements. So I am not sure you want to strike that.
So, make recommendations, how about allocations? Isn't that really what you're talking about?
Yeah, allocation's probably a clearer word, yes.
Let's use that, then.
Well, I think that's the intention, actually, of the sentence. It says determinations with respect to the fund in the allocation of funds. I think that's, that's it. If you strike "and determinations," it still makes it clear that there's a recommendation on the allocation.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So I think you can strike it, but still accomplish what Selectman Smith was emphasizing.
Okay, the other question that I had, and then I'll, we'll go back, and this sounds like a lot more than it is, really, because I marked it up, and there's not a lot of markings. The next, which is, "The committee will produce an annual funding allocation plan." What does that mean? I'm just curious as to what the term "annual funding allocation plan" means.
That's what was submitted to town meeting. If you look at the article on the Tourism Promotion Fund, it was broken down, there was an allocation, as Selectman Smith had mentioned, on each of the categories.
That's what we're naming it.
Yes.
It's just the name of it?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Because if you recall, before, it was just a lump sum. Now we have a funding allocation plan.
Okay, and the, and the last thing, again, very small matter, where in the paragraph that starts with membership, it says, "One CEDC member shall serve as a representative to any committees deemed necessary by the Board of Selectmen." Necessary is kind of a restrictive word. I would say necessary or appropriate, or necessary or advisable. I mean, necessary is a word to me that means you have to demonstrate an absolute need. And maybe you don't, maybe you just think it's a good idea for somebody to sit on that committee.
That's a good point.
Like in powers of attorney to sign documents that are usually necessary or appropriate. So someone says, "Well, is that document really necessary? It's a matter of convenience." You don't get caught up in that.
Do you want to say advisable, or necessary or advisable?
All right, so somebody's got to change that language on that paragraph. Peter's going to take care of that one, aren't you? "PETO, CEDC shall work with existing businesses to create quality year-round and seasonal jobs through expansion and encourage retention." So we're going to change that language to expansion. You had some language that you added that sounded pretty good.
Expansion of existing businesses.
Okay.
And, and, and new businesses, and encouraging, encouraging the retention of existing businesses and new businesses and employees. It's, it's still a little awkward, but the town manager-
Expansion of existing and new businesses?
Yes.
And encourage retention of-
Existing businesses.
Of existing businesses and employees?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that does sound a lot better, okay. Existing businesses.
And it, and it's also mirrored in the next sentence, which says, "CEDC shall work to attract new businesses and local investment," as to, so it enhance, sustain, and diversify the economic base of the community.
That's fine. Okay, so in the next paragraph, after the one you just read, after the word "town administrator," we're going to insert "and/or his designees."
Yep.
And then, Mark, you take in the next one, you said, "Take out his determinations." Is that the edit in the next paragraph?
That's in, that's-
Because you think the recommendations are going to include the allocations, and I would agree that they would.
Yep.
Okay, the next one's fine. So then we go down to membership, and we're going to change the language where it says "one representative of the Yarmouth Business Community" to "one representative from the Yarmouth Business Community," which makes a big difference. It's just one word, but it does change the whole, it resolves the ambiguity.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question on that? Just for clarification, to the Acts, or even as amended, I thought that number was nine versus seven, can we change that?
You thought what?
Did I, did I, that language you sent us today, didn't that say nine members?
The Acts, or the-
I don't have it with me.
The Acts say seven. Section 3, "There shall be in the Town of Yarmouth a Community and Economic Development Committee consisting of seven members."
Appointed by the board.
Appointed by the board.
Okay. I saw nine somewhere, I'll pick that up.
I was going to say, we've always had seven members.
Okay.
Yeah, Dan just wanted to make sure that that language in the charge was consistent with the statute.
Yep.
I think that was his question. And then, in that same paragraph, after the words "deemed necessary," we're going to say "or appropriate" by the Board of Selectmen, necessary or appropriate. And the last thing I had, and this is the lawyer in me, I guess, it says, "Frequency of meetings, CEDC shall hold regular meetings no less than 12 times a year." So can they hold 12 meetings in the month of December? I don't think that's the intent. So, so I would say no less frequently than monthly.
Yeah, yes.
Right?
Yep.
No less frequently than monthly in at least 12 times a year. Does that sound better?
Couldn't you just say monthly? Regular meetings, monthly?
Hold regular monthly meetings?
Yeah.
No less than 12 times a year?
Sure.
Well, if you said regular monthly meetings, it would be meeting-
Yeah, I don't think you need the extra 12 times a year.
So you can just say that, and then period.
The CEDC shall hold regular monthly meetings?
Yeah.
Period?
Occasionally, there's a meeting that's a month that's missed. Sometimes you can't get a quorum in, say, July.
Okay.
Right. Not, and the aim was always to have monthly meetings, but, but on occasion, we would meet twice a month. Again, I'm-
So what if we said, "Shall hold regular monthly meetings when feasible, but no less than 12 meetings per year?"
Sounds good.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I think with these edits that we all contributed to, that this charge is a lot better, I think it's improved, and I think there's a lot of grammatical things and a lot of ambiguous and confusing things that have, that are not clear.
Bob, are you up to date on all of that?
Yes, I have every one of those changes.
And if he has a problem, I took very good notes as well.
Okay, so I can get the amended draft out, if there's anything I miss, we'll-
I have a couple of things. On the, the CEDC shall, consistent with chapter so on and so forth, you know, allocate and determine, typically, the CEDC would also hold back some money that would be allocated for special projects that came up during the year. And so the allocation would show that we're still holding back 25,000 bucks, or whatever the figure happened to be. So if those monies are expended, they would need to come to the Selectmen to approve that individual contract. Sometimes stuff comes up in the middle of the year that's not anticipated at, you know, a town meeting. A few years ago, we, we got funding for the, for all the sand sculptures. This is, I'm going back now five or six years, and that was outside of our normal allocation, again, which was, which was presented to town meeting as, as a lump sum, instead of, you know, the individual items broken out. So how, how would we handle that allocation? In my opinion, that would go through the town administrator and then re-present it to the, to the board.
I, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think, I think there's a, when you say consultation with the board, I mean, some of these items could easily be consent agenda items. They can be identified, they can be noted, or they can be part of the town administrator's report, that we've been working with the committee, there's, in, with respect to the additional funds, these have been, I said, some identified uses, and that can be part of the administrator's report, and he can get some direction from the board if there's an issue or concern. But I think the idea of having to write something in for those, I think the charge itself covers the circumstances.
If you're worried about language that would address that, after the word "funds," the allocation of funds, you could put, comma, "including reserves," comma, and then you'd be all set.
I, I think that would work, and I, and I think Selectman Forrest suggested that they be part of the consent agenda, so, so we know about it.
Right.
And we're aware of it.
That was, that was the general sense of the prior board, was not necessarily getting in the weeds and duplicating the work of the Economic Development Committee, but basically being in the loop. Some might recall that a few town meetings ago, we actually had residents speak from the town meeting floor, asking specific questions, and the board had been disengaged in this whole program for quite some time, and it was very evident when that question came up from someone within the town meeting. So my hope is, is that one of the things that we accomplish here is the board providing general direction, awareness, and understanding of what we're doing with this. That's what was expected in the statute, and I think we've figured out a way to not unnecessarily engage in the decision-making on this, but at least have a hand in the allocation, have a, be consulted by the town administrator. In the past, we've respected the committee, it's a committee of our appointment. So I think we have figured out now with the charge, instead of being missing in action, we actually are involved and are aware in providing some general guidance and direction, which is more or less what, what the committee's been asking for, for a while.
Yeah, absolutely. My, my other comment is, Representative Stone, you indicated the one representative of the town business, I had a problem with the language, the same as you did. However, if we have someone just from the business, say, and I'm not picking on anybody, but the Sons of Aaron, say, if someone from the Sons of Aaron comes on, they get a big allocation every year for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. That's automatically a conflict.
Well, wait a minute, let me address that. It's automatically a potential conflict, for sure. We, as a board, that's a great example. We, as a board, are going to make a determination in a case like that. Do we feel that person should be appointed? Right? If we say no, that, that resolves-
Right.
Any possibility of a conflict. But because somebody has a conflict, does not necessarily disqualify them from serving on a board. What that person's got to do, if anything comes up with the Sons of Aaron in the allocation, they should not even be in the room when that matter's discussed. They should leave. I was telling Bob, I, since I was a Selectman, I had one or two conflict situations, and I left, and I went out in the parking lot. I was not even in the building. And I said, "When you're done, somebody either texts me or let me know that you're done."
Right.
And they weren't actual conflicts, but I felt they would create the appearance of a conflict, which, under the Conflict of Interest law, is a conflict. It's quicksand.
Right.
You know, so if you think, as, as Don Henderson, who used to chair the Zoning Board of Appeals, used to say, "If you think you have a conflict, you probably do." And that's, you know, if your gut is uneasy about something, you probably shouldn't be at that hearing. So I would not say per se-
If I could just, if I could just add to that point, Mr. Chairman, there's also the issue of the appearance of a conflict, that is-
But if that person's not serving on that matter and leaves, you know, it's just like one of us. I mean, we could have a conflict, and we should not, you know, we should not, let's say a good client of mine comes in, and he's looking for something to do with an alcohol license. I should not be, I should not hear that, I should-
Or they want to do summer concerts at the drive-in site for all sorts of commercial purposes. Here's an example.
Like one of my clients?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't sit on that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't touch that with a 10-foot pole. It's not worth it. So, so to answer your question, my opinion would be, that does not per se disqualify that person from sitting on the CEDC, as long as they're mindful that they can't sit on anything where funding would come to their, to their club. However, the board, on the other hand, can also say, "Do we want people like that to be serving on the CEDC? If they're a regular recipient of funds, do we kind of trust them to, to make those distinctions and to not participate?" And to keep that line drawn. We all, at some point, if you sit here long enough, are going to run into some kind of, or on any board, you're going to run into some kind of a conflict situation. It's inevitable. But that doesn't disqualify you from being on a board.
So I'm happy to move and approve the charge with all the amendments, Mr. Chair.
You would like, if this would make this your life easier, if you could send me this in, in Word, I can redline it for you?
Sure.
Or if you're comfortable doing it yourself, whatever you wish. I'm just trying to be helpful.
Well, I could take a cut at it, send it to you, and have you look it over. I think that would be-
All right.
Perfect.
All right, okay.
Did you make the motion?
No, I'm putting it out there.
No, I'm putting it out there, I'm willing to do that, um, but maybe the board wants to take a look at the revised. I mean, there's a lot of, there are a lot of changes here.
Changes here, I think I'd prefer to see it.
Yeah, let's just.
That would be a good idea.
Put the revised.
Yeah, let's get the revisions and then, a- and, and by the way, I, I think the basic charge is good, we've made some, I think, improvements to it, but that doesn't detract from the work that's been done, it's good work.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Are we gonna go to Matta Keys now, Matta Keys Middle School RP discussion?
You ready?
We're ready. Thank you, Bill.
Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. You should have a memorandum to the town administrator dated 7/29/2022. It is essentially the same information that I will go through in the presentation. I'm gonna go through the, some of the groupings of the components rather quickly and, uh, leaving more time for the MRC structure, the committee structure, and the mission statement. So, uh, first, uh, we looked at the components of a redevelopment plan and took a look at some of the issues. One of the issues we found is we're can, uh, the board was concerned about, as we just discussed, putting people on the committee that would have a direct influence or would want, um, a component of Matta Keys and therefore a direct influence on the committee. So we talked about the drive-in theater, uh, committee, uh, and the sort of membership based on skill sets. Um, so we're going in that vein and, uh, taking the liberty of creating a mission statement for the board, uh, that sort of gives the MRC, the Matta Keys Redevelopment Committee guidance. So the components that we discussed it, uh, in the beginning were, are all up there. The structure, the consultants, building grounds assessment. These are pretty much in the sequence that you would follow, uh, being that you wouldn't do the fiscal cost benefit until you actually had plans. You would do the building and grounds assessment early on so that the, uh, focus groups would have something to work with. And community facility assessment is something where you really wanna get an understanding of all your community facilities, because there may be components of, uh, working with those facilities or moving them here, uh, that you might find out necessary. So you don't wanna do Matta Keys in a vacuum, essentially. You wanna take a look at all your facilities just at a conceptual level. So this is a mission statement, and, uh, there was a lot of discussion about transparency in this project, uh, and also involving focus groups. So, uh, I in, inserted all the types of products you wanna do to analyze, assess, uh, to create plans, profiles, renderings, and costs, and things like that. So this cover is, uh, quite a bit of ground in the sense of what the board was talking about. Uh, it is the instruction to the committee, and the instruction to the committee refers to the scope of work. Uh, generally, it's not something that they have to follow to the letter, but it's something that, uh, you're leaving them as sort of a guideline. Just wondering if you would, the board, wanna stop here and discuss this before we move on, or?
No, I think you can go through it.
All right.
It's not that complex, I don't think, but go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, the board of selectmen hereby provide directions to the Matta Keys Redevelopment Committee, who shall, in an equitable and transparent manner, analyze, assess, and plan and recommend three to five alternatives for the reuse and redevelopment of the property. The MRC shall take specific steps such as those outlined by the scope of work to ensure the inclusion of the many interests in the property in an impartial manner, and combine that input with technical support to determine alternative scenarios that contribute to, but not be limited to one of the following areas. And this could be expanded by the board, economic, cultural, recreational, tourism, social, parks, community centers, or education development of the town of Yarmouth. The outcomes shall provide plans, profiles, renderings, with the costs associated with engineering, permitting, design, construction, implementation, funding, and operations, with an understanding of the impacts in the community as both as a whole and nearby to the site, and the sort of whole, uh, references of fiscal impact study we have embedded in this. The property shall include the Matta Keys Middle School location in detail with consideration, but not detailed planning for the adjacent ME Small Elementary School. Project must be capable of beginning in four years and completed in eight years. So that covers, uh, quite a bit of area, and I think covers a lot of the things you discussed over the two meetings that, that we had on the matter. And so that'll be their, uh, charge, as it were, or mission, to move forward, the MRC. Any questions on that?
Um, I have one, Mr. Chairman. That last sentence, um, I don't remember that discussion. Was there a reason behind that in terms of, um, four years, um, especially with the wastewater and everything? Are we putting undue pressure on a committee to come up with something that quickly?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I did add that, I'm, uh, I'm kind of a, have a penchant for moving things forward, so if you wanna delete it, we can.
Don't ask permission of the chair to respond to things, just respond.
Okay. So, uh, I added that, I mean, if you want, what it does is, as you're going through the project, you can't create scenarios that, you know, well, let's figure it out 10 years from now, let's figure it out. I mean, we can change the, the years that is beginning for, finished in eight, uh, to something else, but when you're developing a redevelopment program, having a timeline, uh, for putting in the ground, as it were, helps you understand that you don't wanna create a scenario that gives you an unmeasurable amount of time, uh, that is, oh, we'll be able to do that in 10 years, we'll be able to do that in 20. We really don't want that building vacant.
There's some general guidance.
Right. I mean, we could say, as general guidance, a project must be capable of beginning in four years, and then, uh, be completed in eight. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, in terms of the, 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 the sort of the mission of the committee, first of all, I would name it something different. Um, I, I would name it almost very similar to what we called the drive-in committee. We had, we called it the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee. Uh, this should be the Matta Keys Small School properties, perhaps, but it should be a site utilization committee, and it, and, uh, and its mission. I mean, we're inheriting property that we've been told is gonna cost 20 to 30 million dollars to refurbish and to put into some use. And I'm just a little bit nervous about assuming that there's a willingness that w- we're gonna redevelop that site for some whole range of other things. It's almost like it's buying a car, you, a used car, it needs a lot of work. You're not sure how far you can go or what you can get out of it. I do think there's an enormous amount of attention that has to be focused on just what it is we're getting. So I, I, I like the idea of having to focus on its utilization, what can, and having some initial assessments, kind of like the Drive-In Site Committee did, as to what wh- what is the potential, you know, a, a very intensive focus on the site itself. It scares me that we're talking about property that, in order to reuse it, we're, we're starting off with 20 to 30 million dollars, that's just an enormous amount of money. And, uh, I'm just anxious to focus on the property itself, the site itself. I think the small school needs to be part of the conversation in the assessment, and I think we need to get some sort of critical guidance in terms of what are the range of options and possibilities before we get wedded into having to make decisions about whether it's recreation, library, community center, a whole host of other things. Um, I just get nervous about having to make some big decisions. I would almost, I can almost envision the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee sort of serving very similar people, sort of guiding us and saying, okay, we've looked at the property. Yes, we're, it, if, if you wanna make it usable, these are the range of things that this property could conceivably be used for, with almost no, you know, restrictions on them. You could do this, you could do this, the consultant has sort of said, these are the range of options that we can work with. And then they sort of help us sort of frame the conversation from there, um, in terms of, uh, where we go. It's just, it's, it's a very, it's, this is incredibly ambitious project, and I'm, I just get very nervous about making too big a bite out of it. Because it's, uh, like I said before, I don't even know what the budget is, did you come up with a budget at all in this?
I was considering about 150,000 for something like this. It'll get you sufficient conceptual and plans and cost estimates to be able to move on to, um, another step.
Yeah.
I, I, I could.
Point, you, you don't wanna, um, let anyone think that you're promising to spend 30 million dollars on this project.
Right, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, to me, it's like, I, I don't wanna be overly critical, but it's, it's like, we've been told, okay, here you've got a 30 million dollar, um, money pit. All right, now start figuring out. I, I, I think that makes a huge assumption. It may very well be that the town of Yarmouth doesn't have the appetite nor the financial wherewithal, uh, to get involved in spending that kind of money for that kind of facility. It may very well be that it makes far better sense. Um, again, I, um, I'm interested in knowing more about what we're inheriting and what the potential uses it might be suitable for, or taking this other leap.
Well, certainly suitability and cost are gonna be predominant factors.
Yeah. I'm just very nervous about building expectations that that's where the new library's gonna be, or that's where the new community center will be.
Well, I don't think we're building expectations, I think we're gonna get the consultant, get the right, hopefully skilled people on the committee, similar to the other committee that you mentioned. And, but then brainstorm as to what the potential of the property is. Giving, given zoning, giving, uh, cost, giving the economic climate, all of those things.
Let's see, selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I, again, to be impartial, I can see multiple uses of the property. Could be, you know, as it indicates, recreational, economic. The decision might be made that 30 million dollars is too much, and the best thing to do is to raise the building. And, and so, you know, I, I think, you know, I think the mission statement is open enough and considered open enough that it might determine that there's multiple good uses for the property, not necessarily for the building, or maybe for the building, may, maybe part of the building. Any number of things, so I, I, I don't think this is restrictive at all. Um, I think it's very open-ended, which is what I would expect. I do agree that a good name for the committee, so they know what they're really expected to do, and I think that's also part of the transparency that, that's outlined in the mission statement. So, you know, site redevelopment, site assessment, site. Someone can do better, better language than me, but, you know, just something to make it really clear what, what the mission statement is in a, in a headline.
Yeah, consistent with what Peter's saying, I don't think we should rule out or rule in anything, I mean, we're at the starting point, really.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I agree with Mark, actually. I think outlining it as utilization really keys in on what we're saying, and that there is an intent of, in redevelopment, that you're actually gonna do something. We might just say, we're doing nothing.
No, utilization's the right word.
Yeah.
Uh, is. He just changed redevelopment to utilization. Massachusetts, uh, Matta Keys Utilization Committee.
Yeah, and I think the headline is, we're looking at what our options are in terms of what can be done with the property.
Dan says the abbreviation, the acronym will be muck.
Why I stayed away from that.
I like that.
Yeah, you get caught in the muck.
That's what we.
We don't wanna, I mean, reuse is a possible.
We have our name.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can't change it now. It's too good.
Plus, I think, I think also there's a comfort level. We have had a committee that's been very successful, the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, and they basically took a very conservative approach in terms of how to redevelop and reutilize that site, and it was, went very sequential, very deliberative. Even just the name like that provides me some comfort that we're not diving into something.
I, I, I agree, and I think if we use great care in selecting people, either those people or people like them, or people that complement them, we're gonna be well on our way.
Because there will be some things that will come up down the road. Remember the interest in the Marina idea for the Drive-In Site Committee? The committee did some exploration of that before getting totally vested into that.
We had a big study when, um, not Dan, but, um, the town, I don't know why I'm drawing a blank, the town administrator before him.
Bill Hinchin.
Yeah, and, and, and they said all the economic, um, uh, factors with marinas had changed, and that that was no longer really a viable option, and they were, 'cause they were talking about mixed uses with restaurants and artists, sha- you know, shanties, and, and we had a study done. I remember there was a, a firm from either like North or South Carolina that did it. And it said it's a loser.
Right.
That was it.
Mr. Chairman, could I make one more suggestion? We might wanna strike that, um, sentence that says, include the Matta Keys Middle School location. If considered, but not detailed planning for a small. I, I almost kinda consider that part of the deal here.
Yeah.
We know that school's gonna close because it's gonna be too much to have it. And it, it opens up the potential uses for the entire site. I, I almost think that that should be part of the, the initial plan rather than, uh, a secondary consideration.
I would agree.
So it, it could read, uh, shall include the Matta Keys Middle School location and the adjacent ME Small Elementary School location in detail.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause we're inheriting both properties.
We are, we might as well look into it together.
Yeah, rather than having a whole separate thing, approach.
You'd, you'd sequence it, I mean, you'd have to obviously phase it in the sense that ME Small isn't going to be vacant as soon as the Matta Keys Middle School, but, so in the planning, you would phase the project. If you're gonna move ahead with Matta Keys before ME becomes vacant.
But I do think that out of this whole process, I do think we wanna know what we're going to do with both properties.
Right.
Or what we're gonna recommend the town meeting be done with both properties.
Right. So, anything else, we've got the muck? Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, is the plan to go to town meeting looking for funds to sort of make this sort of part of an article? To go to town meeting, ask for funds to underwrite?
I think in, I think in your.
Analysis, yeah.
Uh, table there, your timetable, you did have, um.
Yes.
A.
At the timetable at the end, do you have a?
Yes, the fifth.
Town meeting seeking funding, you had October, November.
It'd be this fall town meeting that you would go after.
Say that again?
It would be this fall town meeting if you wanna bring it in then, or you bring it in the spring, or you could bring in, uh, you know, an initial, uh, scope to get, let's say, the assessment done, and the committee developed, and then come in in the spring for the larger scope. But given we have wastewater in the spring, we probably don't wanna sort of add to that dialogue.
Be a good idea to fund this study all at once, get it rolling.
Mm-hmm.
Not coming back two, three times.
No.
Bob, I didn't hear you comment.
I, I think it would be better off to come in in the fall town meeting, get the scope lined up, present it to folks.
This fall?
This fall, try to get it funded, not come back two or three times, and then it just, you know, makes people confused.
You're talking about maybe putting an article on for 150,000?
Correct, I mean, I'll, I'll cross-check the costs.
One shot, not in face, it's just a one-shot article.
Right.
And what I'll do is.
Hold that figure up a little bit, right?
Yeah, I will, I, I, I have some sources, and I just do it based on each of the components. You basically cost each of components and add it all up, so, you know, surveys are pretty straightforward to cost out, things like that.
Okay.
And.
And so, proceed on the next chapter of muck.
Muddle through the muck.
The muck structure.
So, uh, yes, the muck structure. Uh, so, uh, as the, the board discussed, we wanted to stay away from putting people on the committee that have a direct uh need or interest in the property as a utilization uh approach. So you have nine members representing professionals related to property utilization, uh, avoid members who have direct relationship, develop project objectives more, uh, with more definitive approaches. So the muck committee would take the scope and sort of put things in between the lines and get more specific in the, in the scope. And identify key constituent groups. So what are the types of utilizations or uses that you would identify? And who is involved in that in the community? You know, it's pretty straightforward in recreation, affordable housing, you know, and uh some of the other uses. By identifying them, and I'll show you the chart, you would have focus groups that you would work directly with. So uh, one of the things I put in here is whether or not you want to appoint Finance Committee, Capital Budget Committee and Planning Board member to this that doesn't have a direct relationship with a potential use. And then it would look like that, six members uh appointed and then one from each. What that does is it has that sort of direct voice as you're going through the study and finance CBC and, or you can just go all uh
My, my approach would be to get as many skilled members from the community as possible because they can always interface with these other department people. And, and you might get somebody from the public, a lot more skilled in, in, let's say, finance than somebody on the Finance Committee who's a volunteer, but really doesn't have a strong, as strong a background in financial matters.
If I can add to that, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think you wanna get people on there that can help you better understand what you're dealing with. I mean, ideally, I'd love to have specific expertise, whether it's in HVAC systems, hazardous waste, zoning, legal. Because what you wanna come out of the initial phase of this work is some overall uh assessment of what you're inheriting, what you gotta deal with, and at least some general guidance in terms of what the potential options are. It would be helpful to have someone uh on the committee that is skilled in private developments, if possible. You know, this, this, it may very well be that the costs of dealing with the hazardous waste and all the other deficiencies of the building are so overwhelming that it may be far more appropriate to write an RFP that allows for some other mixed use that has a, a mix of private and public uses. I just, I just think what you wanna do in the initial phase of this investigation is you wanna have, you wanna the board and the town meeting need advice on what are, what are our best options? In terms of the utilization of the property. Uh, are these problems and issues so overwhelming? And is the structure of the building so set up in such a way that it makes it very difficult to use? Or be reused? I think the Matta Key School, you're gonna get recommendations from some that will say, just bulldoze it. Don't you think?
Well, I, I, I don't know about uh that in terms of utilization. I think that uh when you do a study
Have you been in the small school?
Oh, the small school. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the Matta Keys. Uh, no, I haven't.
Yeah, so.
It's a unique building.
Yeah. So I think what I'm hoping for is a committee of people that are very talented, variety of skills.
That building's in pretty bad shape.
So, so in, in the report uh gave to the board, uh, I had recommended people in architecture, real estate, government, regulatory, environmental, finance, project management and other sort of professions. So that's who I could add to it, yeah.
That's your core group, I think.
Yeah.
The only thing I'd recommend is that you make it a seven-member committee.
That's a good idea, given the
So that you don't have any issues of tie.
Right, you have, you would have nine if you didn't choose the last three as those board members, but I think seven is probably better. Nine's a lot to try to find all those specialties.
I think right now, keep it clean, keep it with the experts. And so, a seven-member committee and leave out the town membership would be my recommendation.
Yeah, town members can be called in to consultation at any time. I don't think we should
It could be part of a focus group.
Positions on the committee for that.
Right. And, and, you know, my feeling would be, um, once we get the initial recommendations, bring the town committees in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if necessary.
Yeah. Well, it's like they'd be a focus group.
Yeah.
Their own focus group.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm staffed to FinCom and CBC, so I can keep them apprised as we move forward and we can keep the planning board apprised as we move forward.
Put them in the bullpen.
There you go.
Phil, where in this process would you envision the potential of getting input from private developers? How would that work in this kind of a scenario?
Well, if you, if you look at this, the focus group meetings, you might decide to actually get a group of private developers as a focus group. So I've, in some redevelopment projects, you'll have a meeting, you'll have a presentation on the site and you'll get some of those private developers to the, to the meeting. And then they come back to you and, you know, talk to you about the potential ideas before you put out an RFP. So you could consider that, that focus group in terms of private developers would be communication, but they're not gonna join together to form one consortium. They're gonna still wanna attack it individually. So when I look at these boxes for focus groups, I look at sort of communication to groups that would have an interest. So yes, you would reach out to development teams. You might choose to run a parallel RFP to development teams to gain initial interest as you're doing the study, because they'll do their own work. You won't need them, you won't need to help them as you would a focus group. So you could run a parallel study as you're working with, let's say, recreation, affordable housing and others.
I like that idea because it gives us um options. Um, and if you do a parallel one, then um they're brought in earlier.
Right.
So you'd have, first, I think before you would get into private type options, you'd have to have searched a lot of the legal and zoning uh capability of the property. And for example, you might say, can we we could, can we subdivide this portion of the property? And then if the, if, if it looks like you can do that and it looks like it could be provide some, some financial feasibility to the project, you know, and complement some other phase of it, then you probably do an RFP at that point.
Right, and, and
I think there'd be some initial determinations that would be made as to what the property could withstand legally, specifically from a zoning standpoint.
And they will do the work, which I like.
Yeah, I mean, and, and what you would do is you probably do the building assessment, then put something out with a building assessment in hand, so that everybody has an equitable look at it. And then you have the cost benefit. If, let's say they don't want the building, but they like the site, then uh how does it affect the other focus groups and their use where they might want the site but not the building? So recreation might want those fields, but private development on those fields, what do you, what do you do next?
But to me, the value of the committee is to help hear all the different
Right.
After the basic assessments have been done, the legal work has been done, we know what we're dealing with in terms of hazardous waste and, and all those sort of the site limitations or the site opportunities, then they can be in a better position, maybe have to, with directed focus groups, talking to developers about a range of options that they may consider. You may even have, for example, um multiple options in terms of affordable housing, for example. I mean, I just assume have the committee be loaded up with expertise, the folks that can really help us assess our options. And then at some point, we're gonna have to go through a process and it may involve a town meeting where the property is made available through an RFP after some public process. And the RFP itself at least includes within it a consensus on how that property should be utilized.
And, and that's, I think, we wanna get to a point where we have a plan that if we do issue RFP, that the developer or the components, the focus groups know that. One of the things we're looking at in the scope is the focus groups will be responsible to respond to an RFP. So uh, they would say, how would they utilize the site? And they would do it in the same equitable manner, that the questions would be same for everybody. How far along are you in your fundraising? You know, where would you get your capital? What's your schedule for development of the site? Uh, what components of the site would you use? And then by virtue of that, you can actually pull RFPs together and look at pieces of the puzzle. You might find that three RFPs, you know, and from three different focus groups form something. What, what you don't wanna, I mean, you wanna have meetings with them, but you don't want them to all speak in a random dialogue about their vision. You want them to come back and say, here's our proposal for the site in the same RFP format. And then if you do that with the private sector, you're getting the things together and they can all sort of interlock. So you'd be able to find out if each focus group had an RFP. And then you'll also have public meetings that they'll answer the questions in the same way. Where's your money coming from? What's your timeline? What is your constituency you're gonna serve? So your cost benefit of how many people are associated with your group? And what goals would you meet, you know, for the community as a result of your development? And if you do that RFP process with the focus groups, then the committee has a much easier way of sort of putting it all on a table and seeing what the answers are. You may find out that affordable housing, recreation, economic development are a good fit because they don't want you know, to use a site in a mutually exclusive way.
Or you might, or you might find out that the fit is somewhat dictated by the zoning.
Exactly.
I'm not averse to changing.
Or wastewater limitations.
Wastewater limitations, yeah.
Zoning limitations, wastewater issues.
Why we go back to Mark's thing about the committee being named specifically to look at the potential of the site.
Right. I would clone the current Drive-In Site Utilization Committee and see if I could get them to, you do the same, play the same role. And um, and quite frankly, they would they, they did a great job in sort of dealing with the, the vagaries and the, the, the blind alleys and the dead ends.
I went to a lot of their early meetings um at the site because it was something I was having a problem understanding conceptually and I didn't wanna just have a presentation at a selectmen's meeting. I just knew I wouldn't get that much out of it. And I, they started, and those guys went down to somebody's house that, that abutted the river and they, they were, you know, all these views were explained in, in the demographics of, of, uh, of, of, of the wetland areas and on and on and on. And um it was, it was quite an education and they, they did, they did a really good job. Um, they modified their plans based on conservation constraints, economic constraints. They kept moving and shifting with information that they were getting that, that deviated from what they originally wanted to do.
Yeah, if, if I can add to that point, the um, the amount of information the committee had after they spent a year or two working on it was significantly greater than what they had in the beginning. So in the beginning, there are all these ideas, all these thoughts, but it was the level of information and detail that helped us. And then the other thing that I thought was very, very smart about their work, and that was they worked in tandem with town staff to do surveys. Okay, these are the range of options that seem to be in line with the possible redevelopment of the site. And those were put out in surveys. And then there was a public process where people could comment. And then once Yarmouth residents had the chance to really weigh in on that site in terms of their thoughts, their vision, that's when things began to gel. And um you could easily seeing it come together. What I would recommend on this is not to get too far ahead of ourselves or get ahead of the committee. It's great to know that there are a range of options and there are a range of processes that can be deployed. But for me, I'm very focused on having a committee like the Drive-In Site Committee, committee with talent and expertise, legal, financial, zoning, uh, and in some other hard, disciplined areas. And then um being able to develop a report with a consultant on what the town's options are. Eventually, these decisions will have to go to town meeting. And so we need to be able to show that, you know, at least what the options are at a key stage in the development of this. So I, I'd be nervous about getting too far ahead of ourselves on all these other processes. Although I could see the committee itself wanting to have a focus group of experts coming in on a specific area, like housing developers. You know, they may wanna have, uh, there's the Mass Housing Partnership. They're a public entity. They do public housing development. They might wanna come in, they might wanna be advised to come in. Mass Development, another public entity that's a developer uh committee might wanna advise, bring them in for some advice. I could see a whole range of public developers or even private developers to come in to provide some kind of assessment in terms of what the options are. I think we've got a, we've got enough folks here in Town Hall, staff-wise, that can sort of identify what the needs are. I don't think that there are any great secrets there in terms of housing and so forth. And we all know that there are some aspects of the site that the community already enjoys, like the gymnasium and the auditorium and the fields, right? I mean, that's kind of no-brainer stuff. So I, I don't think this is gonna be really that complicated. I'm just nervous about inadvertently building expectations by having people with a particular interest programmatically or development-wise sort of on this group. I think having the kind of
Carefully pick the group.
Yeah, I would agree.
And I think even before you get to the focus groups, the key component is gonna be the building and grounds assessment. Let's go back to the fact. Is there really even anything there for us in the current structure?
I, I think in terms of I, I'm, the thirty million dollar study, that was an assessment of whether you could keep the school there, I'm, I'm assuming. And there are codes and other issues that are related to that. And it's not incumbent on a study like that to make it cheap. So you wanna move to the next school, so they
I remember when Bridgewater took over the South Yarmouth Elementary. I mean, I never saw the receipts, but they were talking about millions of dollars in upgrades with electrical and um plumbing and things of that nature. That building was definitely not compliant in any regard.
Exactly. And they spend a lot, they're spending a lot of money over there.
So I mean, uh, I, I think I've got the good gist. I think it's, uh, will whenever the board wants to choose to begin uh putting together a membership, we can write up a sort of profile of what we're looking for. And then uh work through the administrator's office to solicit as we normally would for a committee and then work and decide how you wanna basically uh move.
Well, I think, can I just ask something, Mr. Chairman? Do, I mean, do we wanna get ahead of even town meeting? I mean, do we wanna be creating a committee and engaging this without at least laying out the whole program in an article with a budget to the town meeting? I mean
I'm just thinking about uh sort of critical path that you would sort of refine what you want for the committee, get the process there. By the time you're at a point of the process, you're announcing, we want committee members at town meeting. We're not, I don't think you should select before town meeting.
No, I don't think we have to do that either, but
That's what it sounded like.
I think if I hear my, I hear Mark correctly, and I think I do, and I'm on the same wavelength, I would start with that Drive-In Reuse Committee and poll those people and see if any of those people are interested in getting involved with this project.
This is just one thing. I mean, this is a completely different paradigm. There's a hundred and fifty-six thousand square foot building in which you are selecting a utilization and with that comes the user. Whereas the Drive-In Site Committee is not that. And uh your user is
The skill set.
Right. Your user is, uh, the user associated with the use is allowed, not with the fact that you've selected somebody to take it over. So that kind of difference means that you're almost interviewing candidates for the building versus the Drive-In Site Committee is creating the use to which people would come and periodically use. So it, it's not that the committee members aren't, you know, uh, a positive approach for this.
The Drive-In Site Committee created a use. I think the Drive-In Site Committee studied the property, got public I think the drive-in site committee studied the property, got public input, listened to their consultants.
Right.
Looked at conservation and zoning limitations. Looked at public safety aspects of it with the police and, and fire people and said, we think this is the best alternative that we have. Constantly modifying their plan. I, I don't think any of them really had much in mind at all when they started other than that there was general talk about maybe you could have a boardwalk like they have over on the north side. That was about it.
If I could, um, I, I appreciate the, I think all of us appreciate how great a job the drive-in site committee has done. However, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to just take them and put them into this project. I think that's excluding an awful lot of other people that might be appropriate for the committee. I think, you know, certainly you can put the invitation out there if some of them are interested. But I think to ad hoc take the whole group, um, really short changes this whole process.
Yeah, I wanted to see what the interest level is. I mean, I'm hoping some of these people would be. And there's the other thing is you could, you could look at the people who were on the, um, new middle school committee. I mean, there were some people with building expertise and design expertise on that committee. You can find out who the key players were there and see if any of those people are available. The thing that I'm worried about, very frankly, is you get a lot of public input, a lot of public participation, but they don't have the skill set. To me, the skill set is critical in terms of who sits on this committee.
Your consultant and your committee, they're vital. And you're right, Dan, I, I agree with you that you, you're dealing with a different, some different issues here. But, but the skill set that, that exists on the drive-in site utilization committee is a core set of skills and talents that you need to have.
More like the starting point and then you can go from that. But it sounds to me like what, we're all pretty much in agreement that we're looking at a committee that's going to be impartial from the interest groups that are out there in town, ones that are skilled in many different areas, um, as Bill has outlined for us here. And, uh, that we need to really have an idea of all of this pretty well in place when we go to explain it at town meeting so that they understand. That's going to be the key.
Right. I mean, you, you don't need to select before town meeting, but you need to answer the question about what type of person, what type of committee.
Yeah, and I think the kinds of skills that, or the people that you've envisioned are pretty much the ones we want, people that understand building, design, legal.
Hazardous wastes, hazardous waste.
Hazardous waste.
You got it.
So, uh, not to, uh, go in too much detail on the rest. I've laid out the components and some of the dates, the architectural, I'm, I'm sorry if I, engineering and planning consultant. The architect and engineer will work on obviously the technical issues. Planning consultants often would do the transparency and the surveys and the focus group meetings. So then they convert the subjective dialogue and to something that the architect works with and the engineer and, and, and creates objective, uh, deliverables. So building a grounds assessment, this is crucial. This will build on the one that's already been done and it becomes the baseline documentation to which we engage focus groups. You know, it'll include zoning and, and all those things, uh, and the private sector as we might. Focus groups, as I indicated, uh, the committee is going to go through some of the focus groups and then we'll do outreach to others, you know, uh, contact business community and see how they want to participate. And then, uh, the best process is probably one that's less of a survey and more of an RFP that each group would return something that would ask, how many people are going to be served by this? What is the cost to the community? You know, uh, how do you intend, are you going to purchase it and things like that? So, uh, by virtue of an RP, you can sort of do the comparisons between the various groups. We need survey, and this is really, you know, the focus groups, you've had a dialogue. The, you know, the committee has the, uh, assessment. Now you can go to the community and say, here's some of the approaches that we're looking at. What do you think? I mean, you, you don't want to do this upfront because you're in sort of a vacuum of information. You want to do it where you have information to be able to, uh, you know, provide that to the public. Project benchmarking, so the reason why you do this after the survey is that if you do benchmarking before and you put a whole bunch of examples up online, people will just go to those and say, oh, I like that, I like that. And that's probably doesn't create, uh, you know, any creativity or innovation or individual thought. Or, so benchmarking comes after the survey. So you can say, this is a direction people are thinking as it relates to this particular project. So benchmarking is how have other people, uh, developed their Muck Committee utilization? And what were the results and how, you know, uh, how did they mix the different uses together? So, um, doing this ahead of time, people sometimes just pick some of the things that you've selected. So what this does is the public comes back and you say, here's an example of what we think they're, they're looking at. Scenario concepts, brainstorming, this is a series of meetings, you know, focus groups, uh, open meetings in which you're presenting that information, presenting the focus group, RFPs, presenting all those things and saying, what do you think? How do we put this together? We have one group that wants the fields. We have one group that wants this part of the building. And you can start looking at the pieces of the puzzle as if they're programming. Scenario development is you're taking the, uh, subjective informa-, uh, subject information, subjective, uh, such as the focus groups, the surveys. And then you're having an architect run through it and say, this is how I would piece this together in a concept plan. We can fit this here based on the standards of architecture associated with that particular utilization. So they would basically say, if you want to use it for this, then these are the standards you have to meet. And therefore this might be the layout. This is probably going to be the most expensive part of your, uh, study. Fiscal impact, so this is something that, uh, I've done before because the, you know, you don't want to ten years from now saying, oh, we shouldn't have done that. It's costing us too much money, you know, or, uh, do we really have to pay for this? So you could run a fiscal impact on all these different scenarios or the, that you developed and say, short term, it has a high cost to us, but long term, it doesn't have a high operational cost because the parties are going to take care of the place. Short term, we may be giving someone a land away because it benefits the, the town. But fiscal impact will help you do that. And so it also helps you bring in the private sector ones and say, how do they help? How does a private sector one compare to use by community groups? And then assessment and rating. So you'd have three to five scenarios. And when I say three to five, you may have, uh, three A and three B. You know, that there's a slight difference between them. So you end up, you know, having, and, uh, two A and two B, you know, uh, but you, you'd have, um, probably a minimum of five, but a scenario within a scenario that something might be more private sector centric and there's two scenarios. Or public sector and uses by institutions and there's two scenarios, so. And there's a draft report that goes to town meeting. You don't really bring a final report because town meeting needs to speak on it and you need to tweak it after town meeting, after what you find by the concerns of town meeting. And there's a final report. And, and as I indicated up here, you could really, that's hitting on a fall town meeting. You could extend it to the spring town meeting, just give yourself more time and in terms of some of those components that involve public outreach and stretch those, uh, bars out. And the actual sort of Gantt chart for this, some of the work that involves scenario development, you could probably give yourself more time and push it to the spring. But this puts you far enough away so, from some of the wastewater, you know, project that you're not really having this heavy of a dialogue with that dialogue. But this is a reasonable interpretation of how you do this. Now, an architect might come back when you do an RP and you ask them for a scope. They may come back with some better ideas than what we're seeing here. And that's how you end up hiring the, the firms. And you can hire a firm that is both planning and architecture. But we can choose that when we actually structure the RP. But I think I have some, uh, good guidance here on the committee and everything else. So, uh, I can probably move to create the RP and have something for town meeting. I, I doubt we'll have a, a firm by then. And I think it's probably important that, uh, the board should probably determine whether or not you want that committee to go through that RFP process and select the consultant and it's probably a good idea. So we go into town meeting with a good idea of what the costs are, what our scope is. Probably some of this presentation, uh, what our committee is. And then after that, you sort of pull the pin on moving forward with all, all those steps. So we're not really selecting a consultant beforehand because that probably wouldn't be fair to the committee to, uh, they should have a say.
Mr. Chairman, I'd agree with that. I mean, that's very important that we're just saying that we want the expertise of the committee. So we should really leave it in the hands of that committee to select the consultant.
We'll create the RP and the criteria. We just, and we'll put three firms in front of them, um, during the selection process.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Bill, how far do you expect a hundred and fifty thousand to take you through this process? It's kind of modest.
I mean, we could up it. I just don't want to get too far into, I mean, uh, I don't think you're going into something that you're going, going to go into bids. I think you're going into concept plans. If you really want to kick this off, you do a whole new set of architectural plans and layout plans for the building. And, you know, based on what you have. And then from there, you can go into concept plans. But I, I was going to run this by a few firms and, and get you a better price. Right now, the low end is one fifty. But most of your cost is going to be in the, uh, the scenario, uh, development. That's where you get into the actual architectural cost. A lot of this, you know, as mentioned, some staff involvement could happen in some of the meetings and, you know, the focus group, things like that. Really, the consultants are to create deliverables that guide the process and they're not going to be doing all the work.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm looking at the budget and mirroring what, what Dan said. You know, I could see this a hundred and fifty getting us started and then more money later on. And also there's carrying costs for the, for the building during this two or three years. That's, that's a, a set cost that's going to be ongoing. And if the building is continued to deteriorate because it's not being used, that cost could continue to escalate as well. You know, there's, there's, there's a whole lot of unknowns.
I mean, we can determine what those are, the carrying costs, but, um, I don't see truncating this anymore. And, uh, the carrying cost will go beyond the study and to the extent that whoever you get still has to renovate and or prepare the building to move into it. So you're looking at, you know, total maybe four years before you really are operational. That's why I put that timeline in there. And that's, I mean, to your point, um, four to start, eight to finish. That is basically, so you won't have carrying costs of ten, you know. So with, but that point, we'll see how we can assess carrying cost. And is there a temporary use for it, uh, that garners us some funding? And I think that once you get the committee, that, that maybe is a scope item that we need to add to this. Carrying costs and temporary uses.
Yeah, and I think with the drive-in, uh, committee, they, they did veer off into that direction with temporary uses. I don't think it was so much revenue driven per se, but they were wondering while they were doing this, um, long-term development project, what, what uses they could put it to when they, so that, that's, uh, that's a component I think we have to address.
That'd be a subcommittee, the TMUC, the Temporary Matickey's Utilization Committee.
You're getting into it.
Yes, I'm just mucking around.
You're mucking around.
So you, as I understand it, tonight, you want direction as to two things, if I'm not mistaken. One is to start developing the RFP.
Correct.
And secondly, to get an article ready for town meeting for funding.
Correct, and,
Anything else?
Just if you're okay with the, based on the discussions of edits to the mission statement and, uh, and the committee. Really, the other components are normal components that if you're good to go with that.
Does anybody want to, uh, I mean, I, I believe we're all on board with that. If, if, if we're not, why, why don't your individuals tell me that? But I think we are.
I'm in agreement with, with the, the feeling of the committee. That we need, we need the seven members, we need, we need some money. It needs to go to town meeting first to, you know, to, to make sure that the town is willing to spend that money and, uh, and create all the assessments. I, I think this is a, a very good starting plan.
Well, I would, uh, in the list of things to do, the first thing would be to put together a charge for this committee based on some of the material that's been discussed tonight. So if we're going to begin the process.
So convert the mission statement more in the charge format.
For the, for our, um, what, what are we calling it?
Our committee.
Yeah, the TMUC is a subcommittee for temporary use.
For the Muck, yeah, if we could at least start with the charge. And then obviously a draft, working on a draft RFP. I mean, I thought all the other stuff was interesting, but I think, again, I'm, I, I, I don't want to get too far ahead of us, our skis here. We're going to, we're going to have a committee, we're going to have a consultant. There'll, there'll be iterations to this as we go forward.
I would think on a charge, you could use a lot of what's in your mission statement and tailor that kind of into what the committee is going to be asked to do.
I mean, it, it, uh, we could in, uh, sort of establishing, uh, not committee bylaws per se, but the charge, uh, I mean, all I have for the committee is obviously that. So we turn that into the charge that they would follow the tenants of the mission statement of Muck and go through the scope and things like that.
Consultant and try to determine the best use for the property. You know, take it into consideration, community needs, costs. And that's owning restrictions, you know.
Yeah, and again, again, the charges that we, for most of our committees are typically a page.
Yes.
So this should not be that challenging and, um,
We don't want to muck around with it too much.
We don't want to muck around with it too much. And I would make it overly restrictive.
Watch out, you may slip.
We don't want to make it. Make it robust.
We'll see a draft article, an updated budget.
Right.
And, uh,
And, uh,
Charge.
Essentially, the article, uh, obviously in the beginning would be that you're raising inappropriate. But this would probably be close to what you would have for an article to give the public. I mean, it wouldn't be this long, an idea of where, where it's going. So the mission statement's not a bad way to structure an article because you're following that through a whole project. And then, uh, so we can, I mean, we have a lot here to sort of develop that presentation for town meeting already.
And I'm sure we'll have, uh, plenty of time to edit and revise it so that it suits our needs. So I think that's what, that's what we have for direction, those items right there. Mr. Chairman, the, the sentence, it starts with the outcome. She'll provide plans, profiles, renderings and costs associated. Renderings, there's no way in God's green earth you're going to get renderings for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You can get, uh, you don't get all three sixty around the building. You might get an entrance rendering. And so usually what you do with renderings is where you're going to change the exterior of a building, you would do a rendering for that. And if there's not that much exterior change, then you wouldn't do it. And if there's not that much exterior change, then you wouldn't do it. But renderings aren't that hard. They usually ship it to the less expensive part of the firm. You know, it's their HVAC and their electrical engineers that are going to run up the billable. The rendering people, sometimes these things are done with software. So I don't think, I see the whole 360 be rendered, you know, the sky shots. I just see that if you're going to change an entrance or put an addition on, for whatever reason, you might do strategic renderings.
Okay, that's not unreasonable.
I think we could beat this to a pulp tonight. So why don't we just kind of move on, Mr. Chairman, if we could.
You need anything?
No, no, I'm all set. I've got good guidance. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for all your hard work. You've done a good job and we look forward to seeing what comes out of the MUC.
You have a great line. Nice work, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay. We have some more business after we move from the MUC to a town administrative evaluation. That's going to come off the list, as they say in the courts, because we are still waiting for one evaluation form. We have four. We need to get the fifth one. So we'll put this on for the next meeting. Boarding Committee Actions is next. We are going to go to Dorcas for that.
We have a resignation from Paul Kipitz from the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And attached, we had his email stating his resignation. We have, on the Community Preservation Committee, there are five representative positions, one-year terms to run through July of 2023. And the applicants are Debbie Clark, representing Recreation Commission, Paul Huggins, representing the Conservation Commission, George Slama, representing the Historical Commission, Mary Ann Walsh, representing Housing Authority, and Christine Marzigh-Gliano, representing the Open Space Committee. So the recommendation is to appoint the above committee representatives to the Town of Yarmouth Community Preservation Committee. These appointments are for a one-year term and will run through July 2023.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept the resignation from Paul Kipitz from the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee and that we, in a letter from the Town Administrator's Office, accept the resignation and thank Paul for his dedicated service to the Town of Yarmouth.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we appoint Debbie Clark as a Recreation Commission representative to the Community Preservation Committee to serve for a one-year term running through July 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that Paul Huggins be the Conservation Commission representative to the Community Preservation Committee and that his appointment be for a one-year term running through July 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint George Slama as the Historical Commission representative to the Community Preservation Committee for a term of one year running through July 2023.
Do I have a second? That's Dorcas. Is it second?
Peter, actually.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Mary Ann Walsh, the Housing Authority representative to the Community Preservation Committee to serve a one-year term running through July 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Peter Smith seconds the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I would move to appoint Christine Marzigh-Gliano, the Open Space Committee representative to the Community Preservation Committee for a one-year term running through July 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Selectman Forrest, seconded by Selectman Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously as well.
Mr. Chairman, for the Library Planning Committee, there are reappointments, three regular positions of three years, unexpired terms to run through February of 2025. The commission member, committee members are George Bavino, Linda Callahan, and Mary Riordan-Johnson. And the recommendation is to appoint Mr. Bavino, Ms. Callahan, and Ms. Riordan-Johnson to the Town of Yarmouth Library Planning Committee. These appointments are for three years, unexpired term and run through February 2025.
Do I have a motion on those recommendations?
I'd like to move those recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to move them all together?
Unless you have preferences to go individual.
That's fine, if you want to do that.
I'd like to move as one committee.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. Do I have a second on all those three appointments?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Selectman Forrest, seconded by Selectman Smith to reappoint all three of the people that were recommended, Mr. Bavino, Ms. Callahan, and Ms. Riordan-Johnson, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, all three of those appointments carry unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, for the Affordable Housing Trust appointment for a one regular position, which is a two-year term to run through August of 2024, I recommend we appoint Debbie Clark as a member of the Town of Yarmouth Affordable Housing Trust. And this appointment is for a two-year term, which will run through August 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Ms. Clark as a member of the Town of Yarmouth Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term, which runs through August 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, if I could bring up Tony Kent Arena one more time.
Yep, certainly.
I have been in communication with Judge Julian, who is the Dennis representative to the Tony Kent Arena Board. And he has written me a response that I would like to share with all of you. Your board voted recently to, at a meeting, at a meeting to not appoint Louis Alberti to the board. This Tony Kent Board has been in existence for over 30 years, and the Town of Yarmouth was involved in its formation. Our bylaws have that both Dennis and Yarmouth have a seat on the board to fulfill our mission to support the kids of Dennis and Yarmouth. I can send copy of the bylaws. I am presently the Dennis rep and was appointed by the Board of Selectmen for a one-year term renewable. The town has had a representative that was appointed by the board for many years. Would love to talk to the board about this issue. I believe the citizens of Yarmouth need a voice in our board. Let me know your thoughts. So he is still, I gave him the recommendation of the applicant that I got from Peter. And he's pushing, basically, that he feels we should formally appoint from Yarmouth.
Well, that's not surprising. Judges have a way of getting their way. And being the final word. It's kind of a dilemma for us, really, because, as I understand it, there's nothing in our bylaws or any of the organizing documents of our town government that allow us to appoint people to committees that aren't under the jurisdiction of the Town of Yarmouth. I don't know really how you get around that. It's not that we have any opposition to the person or that we don't want to appoint the person. We're just saying that the judge seems to be saying, and I believe this to be the case from what I've heard historically about this, is they have something in their organizing documents that allows the Town of Yarmouth to make an appointment. But there's nothing in the Town of Yarmouth's bylaws that authorizes us to make an appointment. And we're certainly not governed by Tony Kent's bylaws or governed by the Town of Yarmouth's bylaws.
In our charter.
In our charter. So that's really the problem. I would like to accommodate the judge in some way. But I don't know if any, how we can do that, or if anyone has any suggestions.
May I suggest we allow Judge Julian to come and speak to us? That's basically what he's asking.
I would love to have Judge Julian come because I would like the experience of sitting behind the bench and having him sit in front of me.
Basically, that seems to be what he wants.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Let's bring him in.
Honestly, I don't see the point.
If he's got a suggestion or a way to do it, I mean.
They can just name him.
Exactly.
He does not feel he can do that. I gave him the name of the gentleman that we had been given that was interested in the position. And that was his response to me. He still wants to come in and talk.
What if we make a recommendation, but not an appointment?
Again, we have zero authority, as the chairman said. We, there's nothing in our charter, there's nothing in our bylaws.
If he wants to come in, I certainly don't have any problem. Maybe he'll give me some insight I don't have. But I just articulated what I understand our position to be.
I would just suggest that for our next meeting, we put him on.
If the Town of Yarmouth Town Meeting wants to give us that authority, then we could probably do it.
But it would probably be in a form of an amendment to our charter that were a bylaw, something.
If it were an amendment to our charter, we'd have a big problem.
Right, but the point I'm getting at is there needs to be some way to codify our authority under state law to make an appointment like this. It's just unusual.
Well, one possibility that you can do to shield the Board of Selectmen from it. I mean, the charter does say that the Town Administrator can appoint special purpose committees. There we go. And just do it informally like that. So we can have a person that goes to this outside agency, gathers information and comes back, but he's not officially appointed by the town.
I like that. I will be more than happy to give you his contact information and the name of the candidate.
But I would request that anything that you do.
Then we have to look at their charter and see if that would satisfy them.
I would recommend that anything that you do, I'm just, the legal liability of us even blessing someone to serve on a board of another organization. Let's assume that there's an injury, there's an issue, and there's a.
This was hack.
The Community Action Committee. This went on and on and on with them and.
Yeah, and they're like, why won't you recommend this person? It's like, we have nothing to do with that.
Exactly.
We just don't feel we could.
Exactly, yeah, I think if we're going to.
Can we tap Town Council on this one?
Sure.
And see what, if any, resolution he would recommend.
Yeah.
Tell them that we want to cooperate, we want to be helpful, but we don't want liability and we don't want to exceed our authority.
I think it's a fair, and maybe we could do that. And maybe at that time, we could have Town Council on the virtual side of the meeting with, joining us for this powwow with the judge.
That would be great. If we put him on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well.
Let's get some, yeah, let's get some input from Town Council. And I'll be, I'll stay in touch with the Town Administrator. If we can put it on for the next meeting, we will, if we need a little more time.
I do think there would be value if the administrator and the chairman.
For the same reason we talked about earlier on a different matter that I won't cite. We want to be helpful and accommodating. And the question just is, how can we do that?
Well, I'll be happy to give you his information so you can let him know.
Yeah, send it over to me.
We can have a chat with the judge.
But don't, but don't commit me to anything. Just send it to me.
No, I'm just going, I'm just going to tell the judge I'm sending the information to the chairman.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to move a motion on approving minutes.
To approve the minutes of February 9th?
February 9th, 2021.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion? Talk about detail, these are 11 pages.
All right, second.
Yeah, we have a second.
Oh, no, that's February 8th, I'm sorry. This is February 9th you're moving, right?
Correct.
February 9th, 2021.
We have two sets of minutes, one for.
Motion in a second, okay. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote by necessity, aye.
Okay.
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Did you vote on that?
Vote by necessity.
You're going to vote by necessity? You're going to vote by necessity? I'm going to vote.
I'm voting in favor, yes.
So we have a 401 vote on the 9th. What about the 8th of 2022?
I am making, I am move approval of the minutes for February 8th, 2022.
Second.
Okay. February 8th, I was there, Dan was there, Peter was there, Mark was absent. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
Any extensions?
I abstain.
Okay, one abstention.
Yeah, I'm voting in favor, even though I wasn't there, I watched the meeting.
So we have 401 on the February 8th, 2022. Does that bring us to Agenda Review or?
We're at Agenda Review, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we're on number five, Agenda Review. So Bob's going to take us from here. But one thing, we discussed this today, and he'll tell you why. Mass DOT is not ready yet for their presentation to us. And Bob will explain that.
Yes, I'll give you a little detail. We had a preparation meeting scheduled for last Thursday with the full staff team and the full Mass DOT team, including Tom Rodrick, the program engineer out of DOT from Boston. We also had the District Five folks in. Pamela Hasner is the District Five engineer, and she had her team with her. And available also for that meeting was GPI, which is the consulting firm that's doing all of the design work for Route 28. And there has been some substantial changes in that project that when it first started off, I think it was several years ago, it was simply a resurfacing project for Route 28. And in the intervening time, you know, they were requested by the commission to look at some of the intersections and potential complete streets, principles, which would add, you know, shared use path. And when they went down and went through all of the intersections, it turned out, they listed them right out, that because of congestion factors, crash data, that most of the intersections along that Route 28 corridor, starting from the Barnstable Town Line, are in it. They ranked them like school grades. And the majority of them fall under an F ranking for failing. And, you know, they just go F, F, FD. And so we reviewed some of their expanded scope. And the project engineers had requested that they get an extra couple of weeks internally to review their recommendations so that they would be better prepared to present those and to be more concise in what their findings are for the Board of Selectmen. So we have, they asked us if we could go on in September. They're looking at September 27, and we're going to have another meeting to prepare for that. But I think you'll find it fascinating. And, you know, I would say that the scope of the project has grown tremendously since it was initially proposed. There are funding challenges that they need to go through, the statewide transportation improvement program to make sure that the appropriate funds are allocated. It's not a small project anymore, maybe three times the size of what it originally started off as. And I think potentially, you know, there's a lot of positive benefit that could accrue to the Town of Yarmouth through having the expanded scope, reducing congestion, increasing safety, and more importantly, enhancing the streetscape, including the complete streets, shared use path, and other improvements that are out there. The one thing that I would say that we definitely learned from our meeting last Thursday is that the timing on this project. project, because of the increased scope and intensity, is not such that they will complete this project directly in line with the town's efforts to install the wastewater pipes underneath Route 28. However, they remain, and they stated this and we'll be able to discuss this, I think, in detail, they remain committed to supporting the town in that endeavor. And so one of the possible scenarios that we discussed is having the project potentially move forward for a Phase One utilities only that would be in the timeframe that we have for wastewater and that they would still take more time to finalize some of the intersection work, some of the, you know, the major construction work that's out there. So potentially, we could still get the benefit of including the wastewater under the state program and, and not have to restore that, that whole site. So, um, complicated project, there's some of the design work that they're doing on improving the intersections. It's fascinating. They're evaluating the use of roundabouts, they're evaluating a number of things. So I, I think it'll be a very substantive and, and good discussion. And, you know, throughout the process, that's one thing is, you know, we, we know this team very well. A lot of the members of, you know, your staff have worked with them on specific other projects and, and we have a really good relationship with DOT. If we can help, you know, first have acceptance of what their plan and programs, get some sort of consensus there and then assist with making sure that this is funded. It, it could have a lot of benefits.
Yeah, if I could just chime in, Mr. Chairman, I happened to be in town hall on the day of the briefing and was invited to sit in. And it was a very impressive meeting and update for, for town officials. And I agree with everything that Bob has said. There's, this is not your typical Mass DOT project. There, there are a lot of different dimensions to this. The thing that I was very pleased to see is the extent to which in their design, their initial designs, and again, they still say that this is a 25% design, but when you, when the board gets updated, you'll see that there's a significant, maybe 25% design, but there's been a significant amount of analysis, particularly traffic patterns, volumes, flows and a whole range of other issues. But clearly, they get the need to find a way to make this strip of road, which is, you know, in our, our main economic corridor, to help improve it from a pedestrian point of view, from a safety point of view, and bikeability. I mean, they're, they totally bought into create, creating a roadway that would be a huge asset for the town. Now, there may be some things that they want us to look at and comment on that might be, um, eye popping, but it's all with the intent of soliciting, rather than being timid in their approach, I think they're being bold and they're being honest and they're being very upfront. There are a couple of very interesting proposals that they laid out that I know will get a lot of attention and be worth discussion. But to me, it's reflective of the significant amount of work that they've been doing and analyzing our traffic patterns. So what they wanna do is, is not just resurface a road, but they also wanna create a safer, people-friendly road. And, and, and I, I think that's, that's commendable. So it's gonna be an interesting conversation, it's gonna be an interesting briefing. I will say, because of the work that they've been doing, the cost estimates, it wouldn't surprise me if they've doubled when they do the final numbers, which means that in getting the funding for it, um, you know, we've had some discussions, but we've got more work to do because it fell off the tip, the transportation improvement program for the county. So I represent Barnstable County on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. I am one of the decision makers on the tip. And when we adopted a tip, uh, a couple of meetings ago, I was concerned that this had fallen off. And so this has led to a lot of discussion about how do we get it back on? So that's one of the things that we'll be working on, is getting this project back on the plan, get it, but getting it back in the queue for funding. And because this project needs some more dough, it's, I mean, they had mentioned it sliding off the schedule about a year. Um, I think that's a, that's a timeframe that's workable. But as Bob had said, that they've talked about other ways to do phasing of the work. But in the meantime, we're going to have to engage with our legislators. Um, this might be a time, you know, we talked before about inviting them to the meeting when DOT's here because we're gonna need some help to make sure that it gets the attention that it deserves. The good thing is that there's a lot of federal money being brought into Massachusetts to do roadway improvements. So the timing, for, for this problem to pop up, the timing actually is fortuitous because the state is getting a significant amount of extra money. And so, um, following this briefing, I think there'll be a lot more discussions with legislators and other officials to sort of, sort of mount an effort to lock in the funding and the commitments for it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I could ask a premature question about the briefing. If they're gonna do roundabouts, not knowing exactly where the, the road layouts are gonna be, is there gonna be land takings?
Yes. There's gonna be land takings that are in excess of what you would have on the, um, a traditional intersection. The roundabouts take up more land. So that, that'll be a, that'll be an issue. And, um, one, one thing I, I would add as a, a word of, of strategy for our community, I think it's extremely important at this juncture that we sit now to drive the design. Because the, the more you push, the, the projects that are funded are the ones that are the furthest along in the design. And, and I think we can build significant support for the project, but not if it's, if it's not designed, if we don't get it past that 25% and moved on. Now, I know, uh, you know, we, we wanna reserve, there's a whole period that when they finalize this 25% supplemental, they're calling it, that will have room for comment. But, but I, I think we wanna let them know is that, look, we understand that this has to be fully funded, but we want that design moved. Because that is gonna be what gets us close to the funding. And, and the projects that don't make it are the ones that don't get pushed in the design.
So as I understand it, the original funding that was allocated for the resurfacing is gone by the board, right?
Correct.
And so there is no funding at the present time and the cost, because they're doing a more of a comprehensive project, is probably, and Bob, you said your estimation is about triple, right?
Right.
So that's gotta be funded, that new number.
Right.
Before they can move forward.
Right. So, so that's about 25 million now, but it may rise.
Okay.
So that's gonna be on the 27th. And I might also mention that the cable license hearing, we might be moving to the 27th as well. And the purpose for that is our attorney, Bill Solomon, is doing the final set of negotiations with Comcast. And what we hope to do is to have it so that it can be approved and signed that night, not that, oh, we still are waiting to hear from Comcast. And so, um, that, that could be the finalization of that 10-year license. And we've had it a number of times on the agenda before, but as we left it, the last thing was to get the approval of Comcast on some of the final demands that, that we had. And, um, we also have on the 13th, show cause hearing for Oliver's. And that is the result of noise complaint that was received on the, the new entertainment license. So that'll be an interesting, um, thing to hear. The, the complainant is, you know, one of the individuals that was at the initial hearing and made comments and so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, in terms of an agenda item, I think I just wanna just draw more attention to the, the drought situation and the drought conversation. I think we need to get that back on the agenda. I think it's pretty obvious that there's a significant amount of non-compliance. And I think, um, there's interest in revising what steps can be taken to sort of improve that.
Yes, maybe some bylaw suggestions or something.
Yeah, I think that's another item to be talked about. Obviously, we're not gonna be able to, I'm not sure what else we can do as water commissioners, but I think we're all ears right now in terms of what other measures can we as a Board of Water Commissioners take.
There is a draft bylaw for this fall.
Okay.
That would give the town the teeth to do the, you know, enforcement and fines.
Yeah. But some of it's heard from a retired fire chief who was really worked up about it. And I think the question we have to answer is, when asked, why can't we do more on the enforcement? We need to have an answer. Are there other measures that we can be doing to better enforce? And so I think, I think we need to at least have a brief discussion about that when this comes up again. So I would request that we get that on the agenda for our meeting. It's September 13th, it'll be, you know, it's quite, quite some ways away, but we definitely should add that to the agenda.
And Mr. Chairman, one of the things we asked on the drought was, we were interested in whether the current water conservation has helped in any way with the, with the status of the water in town. So it'd be good to hear that, too.
Sure. And, and I could just give you a little, a preview.
I think the easy way to determine that is to drive around and look at the color of the lawns. If you see a lot of green lawns, the answer's no.
But we still don't really know what the usage.
You're saying to quantify what, what the restrictions translate to in conservation of, of water. Uh, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, what's, what's difficult is, you know, being a fairly seasonal community, right? It, it complicates. So you, you can't say specifically that the, the water conservation for this period, it has, has had a major impact. It certainly didn't in maybe July, but the, this month, there is one little bit of good news is the, the pumping for the wells is significantly decreased to, you know, put us in a, a position that, that far less pumping than we had during the peak season. So we're, that's one good thing is, is that we're no longer in the peak season and, and we'll have on the 13th, a full, we'll provide you with the exact details of the, you know, what the pumping is.
So the demand has gone down.
The, the demand has gone down significantly.
Significantly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably because a lot of people with schools starting.
Are gone back.
Last couple of weeks of August, people start migrating off Cape.
Well, maybe there are people that are actually paying attention to the mailings, the robo calls and the signs suggesting conserve water.
Right. Bob, as, as part of that, it would be nice to see a year over year. I mean, what do we do August of, of 21? What do we do of August of 20? Cause it, it, well, it would be nice to know July and August for the last couple of years, you know, cause if, if we see that in August, it typically drops down anyways, are we seeing really a savings or just the normal? And, and if we don't get some rain, it's gonna get worse and worse and worse irrespective of, of, you know, some of the stuff that's going on. And, and as Mr. Chairman pointed out, um, I drive by and I see people watering their lawns and having the water run down the street. And I don't see that as conservation at all.
I just have to walk by in my neighborhood, unfortunately, to see it.
Right. No, there are people that have just totally tuned, tuned all of this out.
So we should, you know, we should have some more information on that by mid-September. We'll take a look.
I'd be very interested in if there's anything else we can do.
See if we can get any information on to answer, um, Selectman Smith's question as to, is this a normal trend or, I mean, do, do we typically have a drop-off? And is this just something that inevitably happens from year to year? Or as Mark has asked, is this the result of conservation efforts? I think by doing a comparison to the last few years in August, we should at least give us some indication of what the answer to that question is.
I think August goes down traditionally.
Go back to school.
But we have wells out of service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else on agenda review? Things you'd like to have added or?
Um, I think one of the things that might be helpful to, um, get on the radar screen is we've got Veterans Day coming up, uh, November 11th. And I believe the whole matter of coordinating any kind of ceremony is, uh, it's something that we don't wanna have falling through the cracks, Bob, is, um, cause I believe that, um.
Maureen's not doing it?
I, I think, yeah, the folks that have been involved in doing it.
She sent them, didn't she send a notice?
I believe so.
I don't think she's gonna be able to do the one in May.
No, that's exactly it. So we, but I think we have.
I don't think she did the one in November.
Oh, no, the individuals.
People did it.
Right. The individuals involved in the November timeframe have in, I'm, I'm having a senior moment here, bear with me.
I know Dave Aiken was involved in the past. He was one of the.
It came together at the last minute. I think we need to get ahead of it and have, have, have some ceremony, something planned and something done. So I just don't want that to get, cause what typically happens is that, that we get close to the 11th and all of a sudden, there are folks scrambling at the last minute. And we just should not find ourselves in that situation again.
Kurt Sears knows. I don't know if Yarmouth had one last year. Did they on Veterans Day? They did.
It was very last minute.
Very last minute, yeah. Cause most of the people were going to Dennis, right? Cause Dennis had.
They were, they were actually held jointly. They did one, sometimes they do one side of the river and they walk, they walk over the other side of the river to the end.
Okay.
And maybe that's an option, working together. Nice to find more things that Dennis and Yarmouth can work on together, right?
Do you know who the people are in charge of that, Kurt? Do you know who the people are that were in charge of that last year?
I think you're right. The Dave Aiken was part of the last minute. I can't tell the other people.
I guess we could start with Dave Aiken and he could give us information.
I think John Fox was.
He was the former fire chief that Mark was talking about. Wanted to, wanted to have the, uh.
Water shut off.
Yeah, water, if, if people violated the restrictions, shut off the water and charge them 200 bucks for, to turn it back on. Reminded me of like putting a boot on your car, except it's on your water, that kinda thing. I don't know. But in any event.
Yeah. So we need your help on that, Bob.
Some people are pretty passionate about.
That's the other, that's the other, uh, uh, item.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have one. It was mentioned the last meeting, but I truthfully have no concept of what the inclusion of any kind of gray water would mean for our project. It's never been discussed in any detail at all. I don't know if it's ever been researched. I've never ever gotten a figure other than it was prohibitively expensive. Wondering if we can have something in front of us that at least helps us to begin to quantify whether that's something we wanna investigate.
I think you'd probably wanna be getting that information from the consultants.
Yeah, CDM.
Um, the, the. People in the business community and one of whom was Mr. Nacanello who spoke tonight, have raised questions as to can't gray water be used to irrigate lawns, for example? You know, you're always looking for recharge areas to put this water in. So can't you have additional pipes that are laid to divert this treated water for that purpose? And also can it be used for, um, like we had the fire at the landfill? Can, can you have gray water be used to put out fires like that? Um, I don't know the answer. Those sound like great ideas, but I don't know what's involved in terms of cost, engineering, design. But I think that's what Dan's getting at and.
Yes.
More or less see, you know, why, why is that not a component of the wastewater project? Is it, is it because it's cost prohibitive?
Right. Well, the Wastewater Resources Advisory Committee has had it on their agenda several times. And, um, you know, their vote, I think, was unanimous to not pursue it at this time. And I think largely, you know, everyone feels it's a great idea, but what our, our concern is focused on right now is. what our, our concern is focused on right now is, um, a- at the last meeting, we received a very surprising update of the cost estimate that has pushed the total cost of phase one above two hundred million dollars. And, um, it's not clear where the additional forty million, you know, is supposed to be funded from. It certainly wasn't included in the.
Not too long ago, it was one twenty-five.
Right, and, and, and none of those cost increases were incorporated in the initial financial plan. So I, I think that, that the first issue is to develop a financial plan that fully funds just the cost of the wastewater. And if you have a gray water component, you know, it is a project that has additional costs to it. So I, I think that it's really the difference between having a Cadillac system and a, and a Ford or Chevy. And, and I think at this point, what we're looking for is the performance on the nitrogen removal. And that, um, I know when, when Rack looked at the costs and I know the chairman's here and he, he can speak on behalf of Rack. I, I just happened to be at the, at the meeting there. That, that, that was the concern. And it was kind of interesting because the folks that are proponents of that were at the meeting also and, and said at the, at the meeting, well, you know, I, I understand that completely, that this would make it a, a complete Cadillac and we're struggling to be able to just address the, the nitrogen. So I agree with you that, you know, you're better off honing the project down, addressing the nitrogen and not, you know, doing the gray water as well. But those same folks continually bring it up over and over. And, and I, you know, I would say that the consultants have, um, some cost data that maybe we could provide, start looking at it. And, um, you know, if we win the lottery or something, yeah, I think everyone agrees that it, it is a, a great luxury to be able to recapture that gray water and instead of discharging it into a consolidated, uh, you know, groundwater recharge site, that you would distribute it throughout the community. But the cost of distributing that water throughout the community is the difference between being able to do the project potentially and not do the project. And I, and I think that's what the chief concerns are, but.
I suppose, uh, and, uh, another question that could be asked is, even if that were the case, could the pipe be laid for the gray water at the same time that the roads opened up for the main project? So that if the town were in a position to add the gray water component at a later date, they could do so? Is that a possibility?
Well, you know, i- if you consider how much it costs to, to lay a pipe, you, you're laying two pipes. And, um, and, and at some point you have to connect those to the individual homes. It's more of a pipe dream, I think, you know, but, um, but I, I think it's just incumbent on us to at least have the information in front of us. You know, because right now I'm, I'm totally guessing in terms of what the costs are and, you know, didn't realize about the, um, increase in costs, and that's certainly concerning, um, and certainly factors into this, but, um, at least it would be beneficial, I think, for all of us to have the information. Certainly, so we can.
Who has something you want to say?
Just i- it's my understanding that there's some, uh, desire by the golf courses to capture this because they're under the same sort of irrigation restrictions. So, and, and with that, they can't water. So the gray water, uh, helps quite a bit. So the, they probably participate in, you know, the construction or something, get it there. And we've been talking about replacement of irrigation system and things like that. So we want to see how that fits in with, uh, the gray water. But I know there has been a desire by.
Yeah, isn't, isn't Bayberry?
Yeah.
Watered with gray water, Bayberry Golf Course?
It is.
John just told us that today. He had a comment.
So. All right. If anything else comes up, we'll, I get it on the agenda. It's, it's important or urgent or timely. So we're gonna go to individual items now. Uh, Mark?
I'm set. Don't have anything. Thank you.
You're not set. Do you have anything from the county on applying for the, the money? Can you give us a little update on that? There was an article in the paper that, on that.
On ARPA funds?
Yes, and, and, and it was talking about the, there's a deadline to apply for the money, for the grants up to a certain dollar amount. It was in today's paper.
Um, well, for the municipalities, there's already been, I mean, the program that you're referencing is a different program than the one that's directly.
Sounded like it was more for like nonprofits essentially.
Although towns aren't excluded from applying.
It said that they were eligible, too.
Exactly, but the, uh, most of the towns have been putting in their applications for ARPA funds to the Barnstable County.
Have we put in one?
Yes, we have. And our status, it's under review. We've passed the initial application. And we've also passed the, and I was real happy at, at this, that, that they do a, a complete analysis of your agency, town government, to determine whether you're going to remain, you know, in operation throughout the process that you're going to use the ARPA money. And that, that takes a whole different level of analysis.
So Mark, they, they're not just a kind of a recapitulation. They're not going to allocate this money on a town-by-town basis. They're gonna kind of do it on a proposal-by-proposal basis, correct?
Well, initially what has happened is the ARPA funds, there was a twenty-one million dollar, roughly, let's say roughly twenty million dollar allocation made last year. And that fund was split. So ten would be set aside for a, a variety of initiatives and a variety of projects, largely focused on having regional impacts, but not entirely. And then the other ten was being allocated to the towns based on a formula that largely dealt with the size of the towns. There's another allocation of funds that have yet to be distributed. But I would say the odds are reasonably high. They'll be allocated the same way. Half will go to the towns, the other half for some of these other regional and other initiatives. I think there's generally been a consensus that the impacts of COVID have been pretty widespread and significant. And there's a desire to try to find ways to alleviate some of the economic harm or mitigate some of the harm uh, in as many areas as possible. That's not to say that the towns aren't clearly implicated in it. But there are others as well, people in the business community, nonprofits have been really slammed. And so the idea is to expand the diversity of it. The county also has some initiatives of its own. And they are eligible and worthy of consideration. So the county commissioners have formed an advisory committee uh, to assist in making some determinations as to which of those initiatives should be considered. One that I'm particularly interested, there are actually a couple worth noting, and I won't go into significant detail, but they were certainly worth talking about later on at a, at a future meeting. One is what is called the Freshwater Initiative, which is getting the county and the Cape Cod Commission much more involved in helping providing direct aid to towns for the sampling and monitoring of water quality conditions in our ponds, streams and lakes. What we're finding, as you just read the papers, ponds are getting shut down for bathing and all sorts of activities because of this bacteria that is spreading. Uh, and a lot of it has to do with just the warmth, the heat and, uh, sort of creating this just sort of, uh, huge spread of bacteria that's toxic. And, uh, the number of ponds each years, each year, that's the number of ponds impacted each year. It keeps growing. And so, um, the county wants to make sure that there's some funds available for that. Now, the funds that have been earmarked for that are reserve funds. So a decision was made a short time ago, rather than using ARPA funds, to use some reserve funds for that initiative. But the county has talked about expanding its lab capabilities to provide more testing for the towns and for other organizations, particularly water quality testing. So that's going to be an ARPA project you'll probably see. And there are other ones as well that are sort of sitting on a shelf right now, waiting for uh, the next round of funding to be discussed. So, but the towns clearly, at the end of the day, have been, uh, clearly given strong consideration for a good chunk of the money. And, uh, so for the towns, it's, and it's really, the, the portal is open. So when the monies get to the towns, depends on when the towns apply. So Barnstable has applied, they've been funded, Born applied. It, it usually takes about a, maybe a month to get through. It's not that long.
Did we apply for a sum certain, Bob, on our?
Yes, um, one million forty-two thousand. That was the amount that they allocated to us as the, um, town share of the first ten million that was released. So they split it up, as Mark had indicated, through a formula. So, um, a million forty-two thousand. And, and.
And then the application, what, what was the, um, pitch for?
We use, um, propose.
The wastewater?
Yeah, we're going to use that for wastewater and, um, we're going to apply it directly to the wastewater design because that is, you know, the part of the project that has already been appropriated. So, um, instead of using the town appropriations, they wanted to see it for a project that was appropriated. And that, I don't know why, but.
I remember that, yeah.
We have it appropriated, so, so we're eligible. Um, and we've passed the first, two phases of the application process. They've requested some additional information. We're providing, and I'm confident that will be approved and that will take long.
Yeah, and you have to understand the county's compliance requirements are pretty much set by the feds. So, um, it's not like the county's come up with its own, its own special rules and regulations to make decisions. They're essentially reviewing each application so that it's in compliance with the feds. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be the county commissioners that go to jail if, uh, there's non-compliance on the use of the funds. And I have no plans to go to jail anytime soon.
Okay, thank you for that update. Dan, do you have anything?
Uh, just a reminder that the International Vidos Awareness Day is tomorrow, five thirty at Smugglows Beach. So please, um, if you can attend that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dirkus?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Either.
The thing I have on my list is, is the drought. And in a possible, if we could see the draft of the, uh, proposed amendment for a bylaw amendment for town meeting, that'd be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Have we even started that, the draft of that bylaw week?
Yes, the water department just sent it to me, so I, I can send that right along.
Okay, I didn't realize you're that far ahead on it. Okay. Bill, is there anything you'd like to bring up?
Uh, no, uh, just the ARPA funding that you would. Sorry, the ARPA funding that you had mentioned, uh, the portal opened up. It closes September thirtieth with mainly non-profits. There are two types of funding, one hundred thousand to two fifty and then two fifty to five hundred thousand. Uh, I've talked to the health department and trying to get a collection of nonprofits and sit them down and try to help them get through the portal. So uh, all you have to do by the thirtieth is submit a letter of intent.
Yeah, that's what the article said. It didn't seem like there was a lot of heavy lifting initially. So that was good.
Bill, the letter intent goes where?
Uh, into the portal so that, uh, we would probably see how we can help the nonprofits that we already helped through the health department. And then you'd submit a letter of intent. I can send something out through, uh, Mary Alice to everybody, in terms of the links to the portals and everything else.
Okay, good. Anything you'd like to bring up, Bob?
Just a couple of, um, quick items. Um, I wanted to talk about the DOT tonight. I'm glad we had an opportunity to do that. And I wanted to let board members know that the budget process for fiscal year twenty-four has already started. Bill's been doing some great work with the capital improvement program. We have a, a completely new revamped system that, um, is automated, working with the departments and the committee. I think that the board is going to be extremely happy with that. We had wanted to go through one cycle and really pinpoint where we wanted to improve it. And, um, I, I think we fundamentally made some really important changes, so you're going to be seeing that. And on the, uh, annual town budget, I'm currently working right now with the finance department, kind of honing down our initial estimates for revenues for, um, fiscal year twenty-four, which starts the process. And we'll, um, have those revenues, um, to be, once we get things squared away with this town meeting that's upcoming, we'll be presenting, um, the analysis of the revenues to the board and asking for your input on the budget policies. And, uh, I, I really want to give Ed Centio and Maria Ruseva, our, uh, town accountant, my thanks. Uh, you know, they've already been putting together, we have, um, a completely interactive budget process that works with the town unit system that, um, I, I think is really helpful for departments that instead of, you know, the, the normal processes, you know, you fill out your, your spreadsheets of what you're looking for and then submit those. And here, what, what we do is we have departments, we train them up to actually go into the town's accounting system and enter their projections, which get put in the form of the, the reports, which you'll see. So I just want to let you know that, that that process is, is, um, working together. And, um, the last thing, we talked a little bit about wastewater finance and, and those types of issues. And I want to let the board know, um, that we have two new important contracts that we've recently issued for consulting services to assist in, you know, revamping and, and putting a real fine point on this border financing. The first one is the Commoyne Associates. Uh, and these are in conjunctions with requests for proposal that we have done. The Commoyne Associates are going to be assisting with the District Improvement Financing Program, that DIF that, that Bill's working on. And one of the things that they're going to help us do is cost out the revenue projections from that based on, um, the information that we have and assist more in some of that build-out analysis. And we've selected the Collins Center in conjunction with the University of Massachusetts. We'll be assisting with, uh, a more detailed betterment analysis so that we can cost out the phase one betterment programs. It's a little complicated because it's not like residential developments where, you know, you have the same betterment for everyone. It has to be done based on the intensity and the use of the property. And so, um, we've got a tremendous amount of data in there and a solid financial team working on it, plus the consulting assisting us. And so we hope through that process to put, um, a real fine point on updating that financial plan. And it's critical that we do so because, as I indicated before, the, um, you know, more recent inflation in, in that project cost have not been incorporated into the previous financial plans. So, um, you know, they, they really are going to, we're going to have to, um, put a very sharp point on our pencils to address all of those costs. So we're working on those and we'll have reports into the board as we move through September, October and start to get the results of those. All I have for tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
The consent agenda.
To do a consent agenda and, um.
I'd like to move the consent, excuse me, I was a little ahead of myself. I'd like to.
Moving the consent.
Move the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a special entertainment extension for Ryan Family Amusement and a fire request by Seaside Festival.
Yes.
Which is, uh, supported by Yarmouth Fire. Um, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Do you have any other updates other than what you mentioned, Bob?
No, that was my update. I just jumped it in there.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that you're, you had ample time to say everything you want to say. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.